We'll call a special meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. We'll start with a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Ross Connect.
Thank you.
For which it stands. Indivisible, but a liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. So today's agenda really is for special meeting for canvassing of the votes that were cast on Tuesday, November 8th at the general election. And I would ask for review and approval of the agenda.
So moved second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Kara, would you call the role?
Hatcock.
Aye.
La Croix.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Lassiter.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye. Motion carried. First item on the agenda is for our auditor Cindy Moller to give us the results.
I've got all of the information here that you need for the canvas. I've got the poll books, the reports, the abstract slash canvas, which is the grand total of all of the votes cast in all of the races. And there were a total of forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight ballots cast, which is only a fifty-three percent turnout for this election.
And I think that compares to about fifty-nine percent statewide.
I believe that is what it was statewide. It was fifty-nine or sixty percent, yes. Overall, we were a little under what the state was. And as I did say before, there were over nineteen thousand people that took advantage of absentee voting. We were busy every day in our office, either mailing ballots out or most of the time it was voting people at the window, up to twelve hundred one day at our window, voting absentee in person. So the process, oh, go ahead, Gary.
No, so that's approximately about forty percent of the votes cast were cast absentee.
Yes. It's amazing, but I think that in twenty twenty, the voters figured out that it was quick and easy to come in and cast their ballot in person sometime during that six weeks. It just made it more convenient for them. And I think more people are just taking advantage of that process.
So are there any questions of Cindy relative to the information she provided?
So we're ready to go through and actually start the canvas. And I have the poll book, which is right here. And the canvassing board is to open the poll book. So I'm going to let Commissioner Lassiter open the poll book if everybody is all right with that.
I'm legal to do so.
Yes, it is.
She did. She said yes. I heard her. I'm just making sure. All right, here we are. What do we do?
Hey, there's an election day poll book there, which should be this one.
Okay.
And there should be a total number of lines that were signed on election day.
On the back, Cindy?
Should it be like?
It might not be. Okay, seven hundred and thirty-four.
Okay.
So on the reconciliation sheet that I have here, Erin Lloyd, I'm going to write that number. You said seven thirty-four.
Seven thirty-four is the last thing that's on the line. And does it matter if there was an X on something? Does that?
No.
Okay.
Well, that is something that's may or may not have been an error when the poll workers were having somebody sign the book. So when we get through this process, we may or may not be off one or two ballots due to the human process and all of this. So the next one that you want to look at is the absentee
This right here.
Precinct poll book, which is in this envelope.
Do I put these back in here?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
That way we don't get anything mixed up and everything can be, these will get resealed, right?
No.
Nope. Just asking the questions.
So here's the absentee precinct poll book. Now, because the absentee board obviously is working absentees on election day, we print the absentee poll book after five on Monday evening. So this does not include any ballots that are returned to us on election day. We have another report for that. So what is the number of voted ballots on that?
Four seventy-eight.
And then there should be, well, there might or might not be another report underneath of this.
Although the whole.
Yep.
Okay.
And this is the ballots that were returned on election day. So you need to find precinct one-one and how many ballots were returned on election day.
So this is precinct one-one. There's two others. There's two.
Okay. I can't do this on. Travis needs to be here. So that total is one thousand two hundred and fourteen. And then we should also have another sheet of in there of ballots not counted.
Oh, it's a whole nother sheet. Okay.
So in precinct one-one, there was one ballot that was not counted. I'm not used to this calculator.
Give me your big one.
Oh, that's all right. Looks better for your nails. That's okay.
Oh, we're happy. Yeah.
Get it eventually. Okay, well, I really didn't need to do that. Okay, so then you're going to need the summary report, which should also be with that.
Okay, right there.
And at the very top of that report, it tells you how many ballots were cast total.
Two thousand one hundred and seventeen, right? Hasn't I registered voter? Oh, ballots cast. Well, oh wait. One thousand two oh eight. Ballots cast total, one thousand two oh eight.
Okay, and then Okay, so I took the number of ballots that should have been counted less the number of ballots that were ran through the scanners, tabulated, and there was a difference of five. And those differences can be that when the absentee ballot board was marking the names in the precinct poll book, that might not have gotten it might not have gotten highlighted. There may have been a line in the poll book that didn't get signed or that maybe somebody signed twice. So it's human error sometimes in the way that is handled. I think that kind of explains it. I was explaining that to Laura earlier, that everything doesn't always balance to the penny like an auditor likes it to. So that would be precinct one-one. Now we need to take this report and read the results of every race and compare it to the results of every race on the abstract slash canvas report.
Okay, so I'll read.
One of you wants to read and one of you wants to check it off.
I'll read. Do I gotta read the whole name and then go straight across like Brian Bings?
Read the race, the name, and then the total, just the total.
For US Senator Bings, P E N G S, three, one, three. Lesnar, sixty-two, Thune, eight, one, four. For US Representative, Duprell, two, seven, six, Johnson, eight, thirty-nine.
For you, Matt?
United States Representative, next page. You're gonna go along the top of the neck. You gotta follow along one-one on every single page. Every race is gonna be the ended representative, right? So two, seven, six, and then eight, thirty-nine. Governor and Lieutenant Governor, Smith and Kynes, four, one, three. Quinn and Strand, forty-two. Gnome and Roden, seven, forty. For Secretary of State, Cool, three, nine, zero, Johnson, seven, four, seven. Attorney General, Jackley, eight, eight, four. State Auditor, Marty, three, five, six, Meyer, seventy-nine, Sat Gas, six, nine, eight. Treasurer Cunningham, three, five, two, Hader, six, seven, six, five. School and Public Lands, Azure, three, eight, four, Greenfield, seven, two, zero. PUC, Barth, three, six, zero, Nelson, seven, six, three. State Center, District Thirty-three, Frydell, two, eight, three, Johnson, seven, seven, six. Representative, District Thirty-three, Videl, four, three, zero, Massey, five, three, two, Jensen, six, three, six. Supreme Court Justice, Devaney, yes, seven, sixty-one, no, two, one, three. Justice Retention, Salter, yes, seven, four, four, no, two, one, nine. Position A, Seventh Court. Wickrey, four, six, one. Position B, Seventh Court, Connolly, four, five, five. Position C, Seventh Court, Lindgren, four, nine, two. Position D, Hendrickson, four, four, two. Position E, Fife, Fifeley, four, nine, zero. Position F, Fifeley, four, six, seven. Position G, Gassin, Gassinski, four, four, seven. Brown, Position H, Brown, four, four, two. Constitutional Amendment D, yes, six, thirty-eight, no, five, one, seven. Initiated Measure Twenty-seven, yes, five, five, two, no, six, three, six.
For what?
Initiated measures.
We're not following the sequence here somewhere.
I noticed that, that our reports are not necessarily in the order of this canvas report.
All right, where did I back up to? Where did I back up to?
Oh, you're good. You're satisfied with those results? Five, five, two, sixty-six, yes. That's what's on the paper, on the amendments. We just have to follow. I got it now and they're not following.
Okay.
One, two. Okay, now we want to put all of this back in.
And now, will both of these go away?
Yep, I'm just going to wrap right there. Moving on to precinct one, two.
Oh my goodness, you had some really good tape on that one.
Some of them seal them up super good and others barely seal them at all.
All right, what are we looking for here? Precinct one, two?
Grand total, number of minds signed in that poll book.
Eight, sixty-two. Is that all you need on that one? See if I can remember that.
Absentee poll book totaled.
Four, sixty-eight.
Election day, if there were any.
Precinct one, two. This says one.
One thousand three hundred and thirty-one.
That's the number you needed, right?
Yes, sir. Yep.
And then this one's a zero.
So the number of ballots.
Not counted.
Not counted was zero. So we should have a total ballots cast of one thousand three hundred and thirty-one.
I have one thousand three thirty-two.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Onto the results.
All right, for US Senator, Bings, three, three, one, Lesnar, six, seven, Thune, nine, zero, nine. US Representative, Duprell, three hundred, Johnson, nine, five, zero. Governor and Lieutenant Governor, Smith, Kynes, four, seven, four, Quinn Strand, fifty-two, Gnome and Roden, seven, eight, four. Secretary of State, Cool, four, four, three, Johnson, seven, nine, four. Attorney General, Jackley, nine, six, five, State Auditor, Marty, three, nine, five, Meyer, eighty-two, Sat Gas, seven, six, one. Am I going too fast? Are we good? State Treasurer Cunningham, four hundred, Hader, eight, thirty-two. School and Public Lands, Azure, four, ten, Greenfield, seven, nine, eight, PUC, Barth, three, nine, two, Nelson, eight, three, one. Senator, District Thirty-three, Frydell, two, eight, two, Johnson, eight, five, six, Representative, District Thirty-three, Videl, four, eight, two, Massey, six, one, four, but all, and Jensen, six, eight, seven. Supreme Court Justice, Devaney, yes, eight, thirty-six, no, two, thirty-three.
That is where we seem to.
That's where the.
Yeah, so what would you have for Stacy?
Devaney.
Thank you. We've got Stacy first and I'm. Hold on just one second. Now let me find what page I didn't, because that does seem to get where we are missing.
Stacy's at the bottom of mine. So position A, so did it go to position A, B, C, on all y'all's?
Yeah. And then page twenty-two actually does the Supreme Court justices, it looks like. So yeah, do the positions first and then go back to Supreme Court justices. I think we'll be okay.
Okay. You may have to remind me that on a couple of them. I'll get it now. So position A, Stacy, five, oh, five.
On page fourteen.
Yeah, straight through like we're doing it. Good.
Justice. Stacy.
Yep, Stacy, five, oh, five. Position B, Jeffrey, five, one, eight. Position C, Lindgren, five, four, six. Position D, Hendrickson, four, nine, four. Position E, Fifeley, five, four, eight. Position F, Fifeley, five, four, three. Position G, Gassinski, four, nine, seven. Position H, Brown, five, oh, seven. Now do y'all just go to the amendments or does it go back to the justices?
Sprinkles.
Okay, Devaney?
Yes.
Yes, eight, three, six, no, two, thirty-three. Salter, yes, eight, forty-seven, no, two, one, nine. Y'all should have, now, Amendment D, right? Amendment D, yes, seven, forty-two, no, five, forty-three. I mean, I am twenty-seven, yes, five, seventy-six, no, seven, thirty-eight. Well, now that we know where things are lining up, I can go through it.
It does help. Once you get them, you just gotta get them. Yes. You're nice.
Yeah, but nice.
A lot of scissors. Do you wanna see round up the scissors from though? I mean, can you? Look at her. She's right there.
Yep. All right, seven, sixty-two.
Major.
Maybe. There's a reason. Total ballots voted, seven, thirty-five. Precinct one, three, three of the positions.
Those are received on election day. Sorry, we didn't get that title very well for you.
So this is receipt, well, that's three.
Those are the three that were received and checked in on election day. Yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you, John.
Your vote ballots not counted on one, three is two. And your ballots cast total should be one thousand four ninety-five. Are we good on our numbers?
Yes, we are.
Everyone already. All right, y'all ready?
That probably helps rip apart, yeah.
All right. Precinct one, three, so follow along this one, three line. Hold on, Grandpa. Here's the slow one. Senator, United States Senator, Bings, three, six, zero, Lesnar, forty-two, Thune, one thousand fifty-nine. US Representative, Duprell, two, eighty-eight, Johnson, one, zero, nine, three. Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Smith, Kynes, five, one, three, Quinn Strand, thirty, Gnome and Roden, nine, twenty-six. Secretary of State.
With nine, twenty-seven.
Okay, we're missing, we're missing the there should be one more report here. Where'd it go? Missing the provisional report. Who you, well, wait a minute, we might have one in two, three, that would have the same number on it, shouldn't it? Because it was on one, one report. My mind's in yours.
Mine's okay.
Oh. It was not in, oh, no, it's not the same report. You wanna go upstairs and see if we can find? Yeah, was there a provision one? One, three, because that is not. No, oh, yes, there it is. It's behind it. Scare me, Travis.
Travis, one more time.
So we'll have to add those two together.
So I'll go through here and add.
Add that to this.
Okay, goodness gracious.
It shouldn't be, it's not like you're gonna have to add a hundred and fifty or something. Pretty small numbers, but you should come up with that ten sixty on three.
So it was Thune showing ten?
Right here. Yep, he was showing ten sixty and you read ten fifty-nine. It was no.
Yeah, but that's where they caught it was no, was ten, nine, twenty-six. That should have been nine, twenty-seven. So you're
But the other one for Thune and the other ones were right. No, it wasn't. Well, on here it was.
So read your number for one, three for Thune?
One, three is three, sixty on Bings, forty-two on Tamra Lesnar, and then one thousand sixty for the
I said one thousand fifty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll go through there. And now I see this. This is the provisional.
Then, yes, sorry, I tend to forget those provisional.
All right. So we'll start from the beginning here. We've got Bings, three, sixty. Lesnar, forty-two. Thune should be one, zero, six, zero. Back at the very beginning, page one. This is your first one.
Go ahead.
Bings, three, six, zero, Lesnar, forty-two, Thune, one, zero, five, nine. But plus the one is one, zero, six, zero. Okay, I guess.
One, sixty.
Yep, one, sixty. United States Representative, Duprell, two, eighty-eight. Johnson should be one, zero, nine, four.
Yes.
Okay. Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Smith, Kynes is five, one, three. Quinn Strand is thirty. Gnome and Roden is nine, twenty-seven.
What'd you get for the damages?
Five, one, three.
Okay.
Secretary of State is Cool, four, six, six. Johnson is nine, five, two. Attorney General, one, one, four, nine for Jackley.
They got one, one, five, zero.
I'm sorry, one, one, five, zero. Goodness gracious, adding fast when I'm reading it. State Auditor is four, three, zero for Marty. Meyer is sixty-six and Sat Gas is nine, one, four.
Yep.
Treasurer is Cunningham four, two, eight, and Hader is nine, seven, seven. He didn't make this easy on me. School and Public Lands, Azure's four, thirty-nine, Greenfield is nine, four, eight. PUC, Barth is four, zero, seven. Nelson is nine, nine, eight. Senator D, three, District Thirty-three. Frydell is three, oh, five. Johnson is one, zero, zero, six.
Yep.
Representative, District Thirty-three. But all is what do you mean, twenty-seven?
Oh, you're down.
Yeah, you should. Yeah, so Representative, District Thirty-three, but all, five, thirty-three. Massey is seven, one, two.
Page twelve, Deb. Oh, that's why. That's where it's messed up. Okay.
Massey is seven, one, two.
This page down. You're on page twelve, precinct one, three. State Representative, thirty-three. Okay, there you go. Got it.
Massey, seven, one, two, Jensen, eight, zero, two. Now I gotta go all the way to, maybe the position A first. All right.
Did you employers of them guys?
Not yet, not till we get to their, not till we get to their district that they're in. Position A, Wickrey, six, oh, nine.
Hey, hold on. Hey, where's that at? Should be page fourteen. Okay, that's where we're method. Okay. Deb, let me help you guys though. These are not printed both sides, so you won't have to be flipping back and forth.
I printed mine out this morning at home, so I didn't.
Okay, that should help a little bit. Fourteen. Are they in order though? They are. They should be in the order, yes. Okay, so we're on page fourteen? Yep. Okay. We're on precinct one, three. On Big Bird.
Vanberg, Wickrey?
Yes.
Total six, oh, nine.
Okay. Now what are we on?
Position B, Connolly, six, one, three. Position C, Lindgren.
Okay, it should be page sixteen. Yeah, we got fourteen with so let's see the other way. Did it not? Print it in order or what? No, okay, Lindgren's first and what?
We got Lindgren, six, six, two.
Hold on. Tell me the names first. Lindgren?
Hendrickson.
Okay, hold on.
So here, Deb, look right here. Since position C, you wanna put them in order, C, D, B, F, G, H.
Done that run.
Just see the new page numbers. That's what you want.
I was gonna say. I know, I know, following. Okay, here, use this one then, because I just counted all the pages and they're all in order. Okay. So let's get rid of both. For you. Okay. Okay, now we're on page, what page?
Should be sixteen. Lindgren, six, six, two.
Seventh Court, eight. Nope, still in.
You need to be to position C.
I know. Page sixteen. Yep, because you already read Lindgren and Connolly? Yep.
All right, so who do you have in front of you?
I have Lindgren.
Okay, so Lindgren, six, six, two. Position D, Hendrickson, five, eight, one. Position E, Fifeley, six, eight, three. Position F, Fifeley, six, seven, four. Position G, Gassinski, five, nine, seven. Position H, Brown. Position H, Brown, five, eight, seven. Amendment D. Amendment D is seven, six, five.
Precinct three is nine, eight, seven.
I think these, the Supreme Courts come first. I'm sorry, I don't know why this doesn't print in the same order as I'm.
Nope, I'll just machines, I'll put these like that, why don't we just put them in the order that Travis has?
Well, Davaney.
You have D first, and then you have.
Well, hold, hold on, let's just get Davaney. Because unless you put them in order of Davaney first, I mean, I guess we could put them all in that order.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get through it the way it is currently, and then we'll come back.
We can go ahead and do what you're, you have now.
Yeah, uh, well.
Amendment. What's next?
Do you want me to do the amendment, or do you want me to do Davaney? It's easier to go back and do Davaney now, and then reset them to where they.
Do Davaney.
Okay.
That's page twenty-two.
Got it.
Hey, Davaney. Is, yes, nine, eight, seven, no, two, one, three. Salter. Yes, one, zero, zero, four. No, one, nine, two, and then we go over here, Amendment D. But when we go through it again, we'll get it reset the right way. Amendment D is, yes, five, four, four, no, nine, two, eight.
Uh, you're on, um.
You're on the wrong.
Oh, I read the wrong one, you're right, um, Amendment D is seven, six, five, and no is six, nine, five, I read the wrong line, thank you.
The other one's five, three, two, nine.
And then Amendment here is five, four, three, and then nine, two, nine, for Measure Seven.
I had it in the right order, the ways, so we're gonna, somebody's gonna get screwed up here.
Yeah, so what happens is, she was saying that. Once you get to Representative, um, District Thirty-three, so go for it all the way up until District Thirty-three. Is that that one?
All of the pages with the state representatives. Two page, so that's through page thirteen, okay?
Well, one through thirteen should be in order.
One through thirteen should be in order.
Then we go to Circuit A, B, C, D.
Nope, really, you wanna go to Supreme Court.
I think it's.
Yeah.
No, page twenty-two, you're gonna want twenty-two after page thirteen.
They're gonna, they're gonna do Matthew Brown.
And then page twenty-two, twenty-three after twenty-two.
I'm, I'm not sure she felt right along with it, cause she pulled them all up in mind.
Okay, I'll give her, I'll give her mine.
Just go to page thirteen.
Okay.
And what is the justices, Davaney and Salter, what pages are they?
These are all the.
So thirteen.
Twenty-three.
Thirteen, two.
Yep, put thirteen in your package, you're thirteen.
Hey, go ahead.
Then you need twenty-two and twenty-three.
Page towards the two, twenty-three.
Right after thirteen.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, okay?
Okay, then we go to the Circuit Court, A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
Okay, so that's fourteen through twenty-one.
Okay.
And then you should have twenty-four and twenty-five.
Fourteen, fifteen, and then.
Note to South Elaine.
Twenty-five.
Make sure those are in the same order as our reports out of the.
Okay.
ERM, that's crazy that they don't program with the same.
Alright, so we're done with one, three.
Yes, sir.
Do you want me to put them on top, does that go on top of this?
Yeah, that's a great.
And then put it back in that envelope.
Okay. Okay. Number four. Forty-sixties?
Yes, ma'am.
Hang on, we got this thing right now.
Merry Christmas, too. Merry Christmas.
It's not after Thanksgiving, I don't do Christmas inside for Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Alright, provisional poll book and official book panel. Assume there's a reason. Go here, get to my total number. Five hundred. Poll book record, five hundred signatures.
I know, none of that provisional.
On the blue ones.
Perfect.
It was a blank. Now it's got a minus one there, do I take the total number or the?
No, just, well, actually, let's go to the back of them. Keep here to make sure, because we should be. Three eighteen should be the top.
Three eighteen.
Okay.
District one, four, one.
Okay.
Uncounted, right?
Hmm, yep.
Uh, uncount, not counted as one, or that's four is, well, not counted. And then, for the total ballots cast total?
Yes.
Eight, one, seven.
Right on the money, I love it when that.
No other in there, alright, y'all ready to go through? Alright, United States Senator Bangs, one seventy-nine, Lesnar, twenty-nine, Thune, six hundred. Representative Duprell, one fifty-six, Johnson, five ninety-nine. Smith, two fifty-five, for Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Smith, two fifty-five, Quinn, one, nine, Gnome, five thirty-two. Secretary of State Cool, two, two, seven, Johnson, five, four, six. Attorney General Jackley, six, four, two, State Auditor, Marty, two, one, five, Meyer, thirty-eight.
Where we at?
Marty, Auditor, State Auditor.
Got Jackley.
Yep.
Sorry, you're going in.
Auditor, two, one, five, Meyer, thirty-eight, Stackgas, five, one, four. Treasurer Cunningham, two, oh, nine, Hader, five, six, zero, uh, Schools and Public Lands, Azure, two, zero, eight, Greenfield, five, forty-five. PUC Barth, one ninety-four, Nelson, five, six, one, Senator, District Thirty-five. Castleberry, five, six, nine, Representative, District Thirty-five, Cromwell, two, two, eleven, Hubbard, two, thirteen, Randolph. Four, sixty-two.
Somewhere we got, uh.
It, it, because there are so many districts, they're on several pages. So Precinct one, four, District Thirty-five is on page thirteen. But you do have to skip a couple pages when you get to those, so you might wanna slow down when you get to the representative.
Around thirteen.
And we should be District Thirty-five, right?
Yes. Cromwell, Hubbard, Randolph.
Yep. So District Thirty-five, Cromwell, two, eleven, Hubbard, two, thirteen, Randolph, four, sixty-two, Malali, four, ninety-one. Supreme Court Davaney is where we're at next. Supreme Court, Van Davaney, yes, five, forty-two, no, one, fifteen. Salter, yes, five, forty-one, no, one, sixteen. Position A. Feinberg, Wickrey, three, three, five. Position B, Connolly, three, three, five. Lindgren, Position C, three, six, six. Position D, Hendrickson, three, one, nine. Position E, Byfley, three, six, three, Position F, Byfley, three, four, nine. Position G, Gesinski, three, three, seven. Position H, Brown, three, twenty-five. Amendment D, yes, four, oh, six, no, three, eighty-eight. Measure twenty-seven, yes, three, forty-nine, no, four, fifty-seven.
Travis, did you turn these around, because that's not the sequence I had last time.
That was the sequence that we were talking about, trying to keep them to flow exactly through this sheet, so that everything.
The first three I had, and then this one here got off in the end, so.
We got forty-six of these to figure it out.
Okay, well, let's get this right before we go.
Go through page thirteen, Ron.
Okay, I'm on thirteen, what would be the next page?
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay, that's, that was not the way we originally did it.
No, but that's the order that Travis's stuff he's reading.
Okay, so twenty-two and twenty-three done what?
Then fourteen. Through, well, the rest of, fourteen through. Twenty-one, and then twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay.
Good, yes.
There's two packages in there. Poll book one, poll book two.
Hey, we'll have to add those numbers together.
Alright, so Poll Book one is three, sixty-two. And Poll Book two is four, nine, one. Absentee total ballots voted, six, four, zero.
Pretty speedy, you know.
Precinct one, five, ten, um, un, is that, so to go. One, five, not counted as two. There's no other thing. Ballots cast total is one, five, zero, two.
I've got my mouth. Let me take a look at that.
Yep, that's why I'm double checking everything, making sure there's nothing stuck.
Yep, we got six working on.
Yeah. I just put them underneath, so. Get them bolts out and ready.
I should redo my math here, but I've got more than you.
You're like way out there, wait, you're.
Three hundred and sixty-two.
Didn't I tell you that?
Yes, you did.
And four, ninety-one.
Okay, we're good. Fifteen, oh, three, yeah, can't do math, I'm a small calculator.
Well, I tried to get you a bigger one.
Well, I did take the bigger.
Yep. And it still didn't work out for you.
Yeah.
Get a big one.
Okay.
Fifteen, oh, two was.
Okay, I ran out of money on that one. Okay.
I heard.
Sorry about that.
Make sure y'all got your stuff ready, and I'll get cranky, don't tell me you're good.
Great.
Alright, District one, five, United States Senator Bangs, four fifty-four, Lesnar, seventy-five, Thune, nine, thirty-eight. Representative Duprell, three eighty-one, Johnson, one thousand five. Governor Smith, five, nine, five, Quinn, sixty-five, Gnome, eight, one, five. Secretary of State Cool, five, nine, three, Johnson, eight, two, four, Attorney General Jackley, one thousand seventy. Auditor Marty, five, twenty-eight, Meyer, eighty-nine, Stackgas, eight, eight, zero, six. Treasurer Cunningham, five, thirty-five, Hader, eight, seven, one. School and Public Lands, Azure, five, five, four, Greenfield, eight, four, six. PUC Barth, five, two, two, Nelson, eight, eight, one. Senator, District Thirty-two, yep, so, so everybody gets District Thirty-two, which is, first one is Heenan.
On page ten.
Thirty-four, one, thirty-two.
Uh, Heenan would be five, thirty-sixth, Duhamel, nine, one, two.
And then you're next.
Representative, thirty-two is Old Horse, four, twenty-sixth.
Page twelve.
Twelve now?
Yep. Okay, go ahead.
Cause these District Thirty-two ones, every one of those will change a little bit, so Old Horse is four, twenty-six. Stevenson is five, forty-two, Drury is seven, forty, and Duffy is seven, twenty-three. Davaney. Yes, nine, fifty.
Yeah, now.
This is Supreme Court.
H twenty-two.
This, this can keep doing this, okay.
Yep, Supreme Court Davaney, nine, five, zero, yes, no, two, eight, seven. Salter, yes, nine, four, five, no, two, eight, zero. Position A, Wickrey, five, twenty-two. Position B, Connolly, five, one, nine. Position C, Lindgren, five, seventy-four. Position D, Hendrickson, five, ten. Position E, Byfley, five, ninety. Position F, Byfley, five, seventy-six. Position G, Gesinski, five, one, three. Position H, Brown, five, twenty-six. Amendment D, yes, eight, four, seven, no, five, eight, two. Measure twenty-seven, yes, seven, one, eight, no, seven, four, six. That's what I said earlier. I take this now.
Somebody on the other side doing another page.
Precinct two, one.
Alright, this is, you got a lot of stuff.
Probably listing, but going with it.
Yeah, and see, sometimes the poll workers. Include things that you're not supposed to be put in with the poll book, so you do not need this registration list.
One sixty-five.
Absentee.
Total ballots voted, one, one, six. Two, one, it is, they don't have the better sheet.
We don't have it, if, if you don't have one for absentee who's received on election day, that number was zero.
Okay. And not counted was zero. And then two, one, are y'all ready? Oh, total ballots cast, two, eight, one.
Perfect.
Alright. Two, dash, one, so two, dash, one. Bangs, uh, for US Senator Bangs, one, one, four, Lesnar, two, six, Thune, one, thirty-two. Representative Duprell, one, one, five, Johnson, one, thirty-four. Governor Smith, one, forty-two, Quinn, twenty-one, Gnome, one, oh, eight. Secretary of State Cool, one, thirty-four, Johnson, one, twenty-two. Attorney General Jackley, one, forty-six, Auditor Marty, one, twenty-five, Meyer, thirty, your Stackgas, one, oh, seven. Treasurer Cunningham, one, thirty-seven, Hader, one, one, eight. School and Public Lands, Azure, one, thirty-three, Greenfield, one, twenty-one. PUC Barth, one, twenty-nine, Nelson, one, twenty-five. State Senator, District Thirty-two. The first one would be Heenan.
That is on page ten.
Got it, one, thirty-four.
One, thirty-four, and one, thirty-two for Duhamel. District Thirty-two, Old Horse.
That's on page twelve.
Yep.
One, twenty-one, Stevenson, one, thirteen, Drury, ninety-one, Duffy, one, oh, four. Supreme Court Davaney.
That's twenty-two.
Okay, Davaney is, yes, one, thirty-five, no, eighty-six. Salter, yes, one, twenty-three, no, ninety-five. Seventh Court, Wickrey, seventy-eight, Connolly, seventy-three. Lindgren, eighty-two. Hendrickson, sixty-five. Byfley, Position E, seventy-six. Position F, Byfley, seventy-six. Did I say seventy-six for both of them, okay, it just sounded like I said something different, uh, Position G, Gesinski, sixty-eight. H Brown, seventy-one. Amendment Dean, yes, one, ninety-six, no, seventy-five. I am twenty-seven, yes, two, oh, two, no, seventy-three.
So. What is thirteen going to be, page thirteen?
Thirteen should be after twelve. Is thirteen, and then twenty-two and twenty-three.
Holy cow, you're taking away my space. She's moving me.
Move every paper.
Nope.
You know, Ron wants to do the same thing, maybe he wants to spread out that way.
Read this way, so you don't have to change every page.
And then y'all just roll down the roll, if it was me, I'd just lay my pages out and just roll with a chair down the way as you're marking. I just, you know, I'm glad I showered today.
I did too.
Okay, Ron.
Okay, we're on precinct two, two.
Precinct two, two. Yeah, it's, it's one, so far.
No, you check these ones, and I'll check these other ones over here, so when he reads it.
No, you check these ones and I'll check these other ones over here. So when he reads it, you're gonna check these ones. So we, that way you just go like this, go down the line. These ones, but we don't have to change every paper.
Just make it an ascend line, boom, boom, boom.
So move yours down there and then you can help me move on to where we need to, and we just, then we just go, boom, boom, boom. Instead of changing every damn paper.
Okay, start over that way a little bit. Give me some space. I need some working space.
So, seven. Seven, right?
Then.
No election day absentees.
Three not counted.
We go to twelve before we go to, right, we've been going to twelve.
Thirteen. Thirteen.
Okay, so then we go to. Ballot's passed.
One, two, four, eight.
Hey.
Your math's good.
We are over by two, but we're good.
Right there, I've got it. Yeah, we've done this a little bit. They're like, they're thinking here, they're gonna go. They are. Okay, we'll watch it.
Where's eleven? Then you can tell me which page if I get messed up. One through thirteen. I'll go together. One, eleven, twelve, thirteen, got it.
Those all go together.
And then twenty-two, twenty-three.
You're gonna make Ron do all the extra. So you do this system, just go a little slower so we can make sure we got the system.
Yeah.
I'll do this one a little slower for y'all so we can make sure we're on it the right way.
My chairs, they're mine. Thing, like, give me a little bit more. We're not doing anything but marking you most of the time anyway, though, Joe. That was sounding weird.
All right, you ready?
Hold on a sec. I'm gonna get these papers, just stuck them. Be like bingo and have a bingo, go.
All right, Senator, you had the United States Senator Bangs, three one three, uh, three one seven. Lesnar sixty-three, Thune eight fifty. Representative DeProwl, three one nine, Johnson eight three eight. Governor Smith, four oh five, Quinn fifty-six, Noem seven seven one. Secretary of State Cool, three eighty-five, Johnson seven eighty-four. General, Attorney General Jackley, nine one three, Auditor Marty, three three eight, Meyer one hundred, Sat Gas seven two eight. Treasurer Cunningham, three four nine, Hader eight zero seven. School and Public Lands Azure, three fifty-six, Greenfield seven five. PUC Barth, three forty-nine, Nelson seven ninety-three. District, Senator District thirty-five, Castleberry.
Hold on, I get Castleberry on.
Yep.
Thirty-five here, okay, go.
Eight one nine, District thirty-five, Representative Cromwell.
Where's eight one five at? For Cas, where you at? Page thirteen, okay.
Representative District thirty-five.
Okay, Cromwell, okay.
Three four three. Hubbard, three two zero, Randolph, six eight zero, Malali, seven zero five. Supreme Court Devaney.
That's you, Ron.
Yes, seven ninety-one, no, two thirty-three. Salter, seven ninety-one, two two nine. Seventh Circuit Wickrey, four sixty-nine. Connolly, four sixty-three, Lindgren, four ninety-nine. Hendrickson, four fifty-eight. Position E, Fifeley, four ninety-four. Position F, Fifeley, four eight three. Position G, Gesinski, four sixty-three. Brown, four fifty-four. Amendment D, yes, six nine zero, no, five three zero. I am twenty-seven, six five five, no, five eight two. Yep. I agree.
Two-three.
Now that we got this on a roll.
We got it. We'll throw a curve in there somewhere.
Five thirty-four. And there's two on this one.
Okay, so that means when we get to the results, you're gonna have to report stand together. You know, you love that.
I love that part because my, I don't guess it well, even though it's just one or two numbers.
Just when you're on camera.
Total ballots voted, two six to zero. Day of, five. That's right, that's the day of, right?
Yes.
Not counted as zeros. All right, here's my two. So now, I need to do eight hundred and two is the total. Ballots cast, right?
Actually, it's just this one and then this one is separate, so this should match your poll book. Or this one, excuse me, this is the, this is the provisional ballots. So this should match that blue poll book.
Should be two.
They not count one? There might have been one, um, they didn't pull, or they didn't count. Okay, there are two. And then there was one that they did not count.
Not counted as zero.
This doesn't include the provisionals that weren't counted. That's the part we missed when we were putting this on together. Hold on one second. See, we are on two-three.
Two dash three.
Okay, there is only one provisional that was counted. The other one. They read, they voted provisional because they insisted that they were registered in Pennington County. When we were researching it, they were registered in Mead County, so we only counted one.
Okay, so this should be eight hundred and one, or this, is this right?
This should be eight hundred and this should be one.
Okay, oh, I'll get eight hundred and then.
Yep, yep.
Okay, now I add them together when I'm doing this down here.
Yes, for results for the, yes, you're correct.
Okay, since we got the first part, we can start. So Senator Bangs, two seven seven. Lesnar fifty-four, Thune five four five four. The four five four? Okay, Representative DeProwl, two six eight, Johnson four four eight. Governor Smith, three four four. Quinn, forty-five, Noem, three nine five. Secretary of State, Cool, three three zero, Johnson, four two six. Attorney General Jackley, four eight five. The Auditor, Marty, two eight eight, eight zero Meyer, and Sat Gas is three seven nine. State Treasurer Cunningham is three one eight. Hader is four two one. School and Public Lands Azure is three one four, Greenfield four one seven. PUC Barth, three zero two. Nelson, four three four. Senator District thirty-five, Castleberry. Then when you're ready, Castleberry. I think it's over on him, right?
On page ten.
I'm on the.
Nope, you're on the other one. Page ten, Deb.
I'm on page twenty-two.
Oh, there's Castleberry at the, okay.
Castleberry should be, um, four four, uh, four five six.
Four five six.
Four five six.
Okay.
Representative District thirty-five, Cromwell, is two seven six. Hubbard, two six one. Three four two for Randolph and Malali is three seven two. Devaney. For Supreme Court Justice. Devaney, yes, four four seven, no, one eight five. Salter, yes. Four four two, no, one eight nine. Seventh Court Wickrey. Three zero four. Connolly, three zero one. Lindgren. Three one six. Hendrickson. Two eight four. Position E, Fifeley. Three one nine. Position F, Fifeley. Two nine eight. Gesinski, two seven nine, Brown, two nine five. Amendment D. Yes, five two four. Amendment D, five two four, uh, no, is two five five. I am twenty-seven, yes. Five oh nine, no, two seven seven. Provisional, no provisionals. Five, six, four, total signatures.
No election rules checked in.
Three twenty-five total votes, ballots voted. Election day threes. Non-counted one.
Oops, 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 hold on just a second, I missed the election day one in there.
I said I can cut yours.
I cut yours.
Total eight eight nine.
You said uncounted was three?
Uncounted for two, right, we're on two four, uncounted is one. I said three for, um. Day of.
Okay, all right, we're good.
Okay, ready? US Senator Bangs, three three six, Lesnar, four nine, Thune, four eight four. Representative DeProwl, two nine five, Johnson, five one six. Governor Smith, four one three, Quinn, thirty-seven, Noem, four twenty-nine. Secretary of State Cool, three nine seven, Johnson, four two eight. Attorney General Jackley, five five three. Auditor Marty, three seven zero, Meyer eighty-three, Sat Gas three seventy-one. State Treasurer Cunningham, three seven nine, Hader four two zero. School and Public Lands Azure, three ninety, Greenfield four eleven, PUC. Barth, three seven four, Nelson four four three. State Senator District thirty-two. Heenan. Okay, we're good. Three sixty-eight, Duhamel, four seventy-four, Representative for District thirty-two, Old Horse. Two ninety-one, Stevenson, three sixty-two, Drury, three three seven, Duffy, three six four. Devaney. Yes, five one nine, no, two zero one. Salter, yes, five eleven, no, two one two. Wickrey, two seventy-seven, Connolly, two seventy-nine, Lindgren, two ninety-two, Hendrickson, two seventy-one. Position E, Fifeley, three hundred. Position F, Fifeley, two ninety-three, Gesinski, two seventy-three, Brown, two seventy. Amendment D, yes, five eight nine, no, two seventy-four. I am twenty-seven, yes, five six five, no, three one three. Do that one more time. Which one? Oh, five six five and three one three. Five six five, three one three. Okay. Pacing two five, uh, it looks like there's two provisional signatures.
And both of them were counted.
Okay, and then, uh, four eighty-one for your regular. Total ballots voted, three three six. Day of ballots cast, two. Non-counted ballots, one. Total ballots cast, eight one seven. And then total ballots on the provisional is two.
We're within two on the election, so we're good there.
All right, US Senator Bangs, two six three, Lesnar forty-five. Thune, five hundred. US Representative DeProwl, two thirty-six, Johnson, five one eight. Governor Smith, three three three. Quinn, forty, Noem, four three seven. Secretary of State, Cool, three one zero, Johnson, five four five two. Attorney General Jackley. Five six two, Auditor Marty. Two nine zero, Meyer, five five, Sat Gas, two one, uh, four one nine. Treasurer Cunningham, two nine nine, Hader, four five nine. School and Public Lands Azure, three hundred, Greenfield, four five one. PUC Barth, two nine seven. Nelson, four five nine. State Senator District thirty-two, Heenan. Okay, uh, two nine six. Four eight three. Representative District thirty-two. Old Horse, two fifty. Hold on one second here. Yep.
See old horse? Right there, okay, got it.
Okay, Old Horse, two five zero, Stevenson, two eight three, Drury, three nine eight. Duffy, three nine five. Devaney. Five three zero, yes, one three seven, no. Salter, yes, five one seven, no, one four one. Wickrey, three oh nine. Connolly, do a three oh one. Lindgren, three one nine. Hendrickson, two eight nine. Position E, Fifeley. Three two one, position F, Fifeley. Three oh nine. Gesinski. Two seven eight, Brown. Two eight four, Amendment D, yes, four nine five, no, three zero eight. I am twenty-seven, four seven eight for yes, three three two for no. Provisional ballot, none. One five one. One ninety-three total ballots and voted. For District three one, two ballots on the day of. Three ballots not counted. Total ballots cast, three forty-two.
One, so we're good.
Senator Bangs, one one eight, Lesnar, one nine, Thune, one nine eight. Representative DeProwl, nine eight, Johnson, two two zero. Governor Smith, one five three, Quinn, ten. Noem, one seven five, Secretary of State Cool, one thirty-six, Johnson, one eighty-four. Attorney General Jackley, two forty-seven, Auditor Marty, one twenty-six, Meyer nineteen, Sat Gas, one seventy-four. Cunningham for State Treasurer, one twenty-eight. Hader, one ninety, School and Public Lands Azure, one thirty-six, Greenfield, one eighty-one, PUC Barth, one twenty-six. Nelson, one ninety-one, State Senator District thirty-two, Heenan. P U C Barth one, twenty-six, Nelson one, ninety-one, State Senator District thirty-two Heenan.
Okay.
One, twenty-four, Duhamel two, oh, three, Representative District thirty-two Old Horse.
It got over us.
One, oh, nine, Stevenson one, thirty-eight, Drury one, sixty-four, Duffy one, fifty-five, Devaney.
Two, two, eight.
Two, two, eight, yes, no, sixty-five, Salter, yes, two, two, four, no, sixty-five. Wickrey one, forty-one, Connolly one, forty-three, Lindgren one, forty-six, Hendrickson one, thirty-three, Position E five, three, one, fifty-six. Position F five, three, one, fifty, Gazinski one, thirty-three, Brown one, thirty, Amendment D.
I got one, thirty-three.
For Brown?
Uh, let's see.
Gazinski was one, thirty-three.
Okay, okay, we'll just.
One, thirty-three, uh, Brown one, thirty, Amendment D, yes, two, oh, two, no, one, thirty-six. I am twenty-seven, yes, one, seventy-nine, no, one, sixty-one. She doesn't mean, yeah, the opening, while we're waiting, but I'm binging up.
I'm not opening.
No, I said doesn't make that whatever she's, well, he's marking him, she can open next.
There you go, I'll do it.
Yeah, so she can hand it to you while he's marking him. Alright, provisional ballot, one. Ooh, there's a full book one and a full book two. So you gotta math this one a little bit. So, whole book one, issue in six, thirty.
One second, I was looking at provisional, because I had two tables, so we had two provisional books.
Oh, you remember which I found it, right?
Nope, I was just wondering why there was two, then I realized they have two tables.
Thank you.
And you said there were.
Go ahead.
Okay, there were no provisionals that were.
Okay, so table one should be six, thirty. Whole book two is six, eighty-one. So they voted provisional, but they won't report if the job disqualified them in some way or shape or form.
Yep.
Gotcha.
They're not registered, they're not registered, they're not from the precinct.
Gotcha. Total ballots voted nine, thirty-seven. Day of ballots, one, for precinct three, two. And we're uncounted.
Okay, hold on one second, so we had six, thirty in one book. Six, eighty-one in the other, nine, thirty-seven absentees, one day up, okay.
Total cast two, two, four, five.
Okay, we're good.
Great. We're gonna take a break, I need to make a phone call about fun, it's gonna be longer than I thought.
Well, me too, because I gotta pick up the lady at five, so maybe at quarter to.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a break.
Alright, um, ballots, uh, where are we at, we're at Senator Bangs six, ninety-seven, Lesnar ninety-seven, Thune one, four, zero, seven. Representative DeProwl five, five, two, Johnson one, five, zero, nine, Governor Smith one, nine, one, eight, Quinn five, four, Gnome one, two, three, seven. Secretary of State Cool eight, three, four, Johnson one, two, six, eight, Attorney General Jackley one, five, seven, eight. Auditor Marty seven, five, nine, Meyer one, three, three, Sat Gas one, one, nine, one. Treasurer Cunningham seven, five, seven, Hater one, three, one, four, School and Public Lands Azure six, seven, sixty-eight. Greenfield one, two, seven, zero, P U C Barth seven, thirty-four, Nelson one, three, three, zero, State Senator District thirty-four, Dietrich.
He's right.
One, four, three, zero, State Representative District thirty-four Drew.
Um, Drew, got her.
Eight, zero, two, Schultz five, nine, eight, Olson one, one, four, four, Derby one, two, two, seven. Devaney. Yes, one, three, four, eight, no, four, zero, nine, Salter one, three, five, one, no, three, nine, eight. Wickrey seven, six, nine, Connolly eight, zero, two, Lindgren eight, fifty-one, Hendrickson seven, six, two. Position E five, three, nine, one, two, Position F five, three, eight, nine, seven, Gazinski seven, eight, six, Brown seven, seven, three. Amendment D, yes, one, two, seven, zero, no, nine, zero, four, I am twenty-seven, one, one, four, five, no, one, zero, six, six.
I was just loving this.
That didn't do her job. Alright, got a couple of pull books in here, let's see, provisionals. Uh, zero on that one, and it looks like there's two on here. And to say this here, there's a note, second signature is really for story on ballot.
Okay, there is one for three, three, and a buzz comment.
Okay, so I have to do math.
Yes, you do.
Oh goodness, um.
One is highlighted. That's how you like it, I sure did it your way.
Oh, you did, so.
Your way on yours.
What are we on, three, three?
You will be on, yep, you will already be highlighted.
Okay, good.
That is the number that I would use.
Five, thirty-two.
Let's go with that, we'll see where we, there might be something else.
It appears six hundred, five, thirty-two, and six hundred. Ballots voted one, zero, six, two. Day of two. Not counted for. Total provisional is one, right?
Yep.
And then total uh, ballots cast two thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight.
Good.
Alright, ready to make your roll?
Go.
Senator Bangs four, eight, four, Lesnar eighty-four, Thune one, four, eight, eight. Representative DeProwl four, four, six, Johnson one, five, six, two. Governor Smith seven, nine, four, Quinn five, five, Gnome one, three, zero, eight. Secretary of State seven, three, eight, Cool Johnson one, three, two, eight. Marty Jackley.
One, oh, one, three, seven, one.
Whoa, whoa, which one, Secretary of State?
Um, Marty.
Marty Jackley.
One, three, seven, one.
Marty Jackley, I'm showing one, six, five, eight.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one, okay. Why didn't I see, okay, the last one was seven, three, eight, one, three, two, eight, right?
Uh, one, three, two, eight, yes.
Sorry.
Uh, State Auditor Marty six, five, eight. Meyer one, one, nine, Sat Gas one, two, five, zero. Cunningham for Treasurer six, five, six, Josh Hader one, three, six, zero. School and Lands Azure six, six, four, Greenfield three, three, zero.
One, three, three, zero.
One, three, three, zero, yes, you're correct. P U C Barth six, two, eight. Chris Nelson one, three, eight, nine. Senator District thirty-four Dietrich. One, four, five, uh, one, five, zero, zero, yeah, one, five, zero, zero. Uh, District thirty-four Drew.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, six, six, eight. Schultz five, three, one, Olson one, one, eight, four. Mike Derby one, two, nine, zero. Devaney. Yes, one, four, three, eight, no, three, two, zero. Salter, yes, one, four, three, zero, no, three, one, seven. Wickrey eight, one, seven. Connolly eight, one, three, Lindgren eight, nine, eight, Hendrickson eight, zero, three. Position E five, three, nine, four, eight, Position F five, three, nine, two, six. Gazinski eight, zero, seven, Brown eight, two, one, Amendment D. One, one, three, nine, for yes, nine, eight, one, for no. I am twenty-seven. Yes, nine, six, five, no, one, one, nine, one. I had to put it back in there. Three, ninety-five. And five, twenty-four. I'm gonna push this with a red button here, there will come. Did you see what she tried to do? Tried to cut my hair. I mean, it's not like I got a lot there anyway. Total ballots voted in, in seven. Day of ballots, five. Ballots, four. That's the ballots cast total one, eight, one, two. Looking good.
Yep.
Okay, Bangs, Sir Senator four, eight, two, Lesnar fifty-four, Thune one, two, three, seven. Representative DeProwl three, five, zero, Johnson one, three, zero, six. Governor Smith six, six, five, Quinn twenty-eight, Gnome one, zero, eight, six, Secretary of State Cool five, nine, one, Johnson one, 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 two. Uh, Jackley one, three, seven, one, Auditor Marty five, two, six, Meyer eight, zero, Sat Gas one, zero, eight, three. Treasurer Cunningham five, two, one, Hater one, one, six, zero. School and Public Lands Azure five, forty-six, Greenfield one, one, zero, five. P U C Barth five, zero, five, Nelson one, one, seven, four, Senator District thirty-four Dietrich. One, two, eight, one, District thirty-four Representative Drew five, six, eight, Schultz four, two, eight, Olson one, zero, four, five, Derby one, zero, five, zero. Supreme Court Devaney, yes, one, one, two, two, no, two, seventy-two, Salter one, one, three, eight, no, two, fifty-four. Wickrey six, six, three, Connolly six, nine, six, Lindgren seven, four, six, Hendrickson six, four, nine. Position E five, three, eight, three, six, Position F five, three, eight, two, one, Gazinski six, seven, four, Brown six, seven, seven. Amendment D, yes, nine, six, nine, no, seven, nine, zero. I am twenty-seven, yes, seven, six, seven, no, one, zero, one, nine.
Is that okay, official for you, young man?
Yes, one provisional.
That was not counted.
Okay, that's not counted. And six, six, nine. Total ballots voted five, sixty-six. Free day of. One not counted. Ballots cast total one, two, four, zero.
Okay, screen, we're good.
Alright, free five. Senator Bangs two, seventy-two, Lesnar thirty-six, Thune nine, one, zero. Representative DeProwl two, oh, six, Johnson nine, six, five, Governor, Governor Smith three, ninety-nine, Ben twenty, Gnome eight, oh, six. Secretary of State Cool thirty, three, forty-four, Johnson eight, thirty-five, A G nine, uh, uh, Jackley nine, eighty-eight. Auditor Marty two, ninety-nine, Meyer forty-two, Sat Gas eight, one, six. Treasurer Cunningham two, ninety-seven, Hater eight, sixty-five, School and Public Lands Azure three, ten, Greenfield eight, thirty-four. P U C Barth two, ninety, Nelson eight, sixty-one, Senator District thirty-three right now.
Go.
One, ninety-seven, Johnson eight, ninety-eight, Representative District thirty-three, but all.
Don't worry, I got, right here.
Three, seventy-eight, six, seventy-nine for Massey, six, seventy-three for Jensen. Devaney, yes, eight, forty-eight, no, one, fifty-one, Salter, yes, eight, forty-seven, no, one, forty-five. Wickrey four, seventy-nine, Connolly four, ninety, Lindgren four, five, eighty-three, Hendrickson four, eighty-nine, Position E five, three, five, sixty-six. Position F five, three, five, fifty-six. Did I say five, sixty-six on the first one?
Yep.
Okay, um, Gazinski four, eighty-seven, Brown four, eighty-five, Amendment D, yes, six, oh, seven, no, six, oh, four. I am twenty-seven, yes, four, seventy-two, no, seven, fifty-two.
Fifty to go.
Hey, there you go, you got a nice.
Thanks, Ross.
Did you hear that? I think she threatened me.
I didn't, I said I was gonna cut your hairs off.
Could be no provisional.
No provisionals.
Thank you, Ross.
Five, twenty-two. Total ballots voted three, twenty. Day of cast two. Name, uh, not counted two. Total cast eight, forty-two. Good to start.
Right on.
Senator Bangs three, fifty-one, Lesnar sixty-five, Thune four, oh, eight, Representative DeProwl. Three, one, nine, Johnson four, twenty-one, Governor Smith four, thirty-four, Quinn fifty-one, Gnome three, forty-three, Secretary of State Cool four, thirty, Johnson three, fifty-seven. A G Jackley four, sixty-eight, Auditor Marty three, ninety, Meyer eighty-five, Sat Gas three, one, three. Treasurer Cunningham four, one, two, Hater three, six, eight. Uh, School and Public Lands Azure four, eleven, Greenfield three, six, nine. P U C Barth four, oh, four, Nelson three, seventy-six, Senator District thirty-two Heenan. Three, seventy-eight, Duhamel four, nineteen, District thirty-two Representative Old Horse. Three, sixty-five, Stephenson three, oh, two, Drury two, eighty-five, Duffy three, thirty-two. Devaney, yes, four, seventy-six, no, two, oh, three, Salter, yes, four, sixty-nine, no, two, oh, eight. Wickrey two, sixty-six, Connolly two, eighty, Lindgren two, eighty-five, Hendrickson two, fifty-five, Position E five, three, two, eighty-five, Position F five, three, two, seventy-two. Gazinski two, fifty-eight, Brown two, seventy-one, Amendment D, yes, five, ninety-five, no, two, sixteen. I am. Twenty-seven, yes, five, five, zero, no, two, seventy-two.
Even. Four, two, only one provisional was counted.
I don't know, I don't even see that provisional standing. See it.
They did not prevent, put the provisional whole book in with the full books. I, I know that we did count one of the two provisionals that we received.
Okay, uh, four, eighteen, and three, twenty-two. Total ballots voted three, forty-six. Day of cast three. Uh, uncounted as one. We have one at, one provisional, and we have one thousand eighty-four total cast. We're good. All right, so Senator Bangs three eighty five, Lesnar eighty seven, Thun five eighty nine. Duprell three seventy one, Johnson six one seven. Governor five oh, uh, Smith five oh three, Qu- Quint sixty seven, Noam four ninety eight. Cool four eighty seven, Johnson five forty two, Jackley six seventy two. Marty fourth thirty two, Meyer one one four, Sat Gas four seventy two. Treasurer. Or set Cunningham four seventy one, Hater five thirty seven. Going public lands, Azure four sixty four, Greenfield five twenty six. Barth four sixty one. Nelson five thirty, uh, five forty. Senator District thirty two Heenan. Four forty one, Duhamel five nine zero. District thirty two Representative Old Horse, three ninety six, Stephenson three eighty three. Drury four fifty seven, Duffy four sixty three. Devaney, yes, six twenty two, no, two ninety three. You're good?
Yep.
Salter. Six twenty seven, what, yes.
What, uh, you had for Delaney, six twenty two and two ninety three?
Delaney, I had six twenty two and two ninety three. Salter, yes, six twenty six, uh, I'm sorry, six twenty seven, and no, two eighty five. Wickrey three ninety two, Connolly three ninety eight, Lindgren four eleven. Hendrickson three seventy eight, position E Fifeley four oh eight, position F Fifeley three eighty five. Kaczynski three eighty six, Brown three ninety five.
Three ninety seven is what I got.
I'm sorry, you're right, three ninety seven, I don't know why I said five, it's right there. Amendment D, yes, seven four zero, no, three one six. I am twenty seven, six eighty nine, no, three eight zero. We're almost halfway through. All right, Grandma. Seven thirty five. Total ballots voted, forty. Day of four. One not counted. Total, one zero eight one.
Good to go.
Senator Bangs three oh two, Lesnar sixty, Thun seven oh six, Representative Duprell two ninety six, Johnson seventy twenty four. Seven twenty four, not seventy twenty four, Governor Smith four hundred, Quint thirty three, Noam six thirty eight, Secretary of State Cool three seventy eight. Johnson six forty seven, Jackley, Jackley AG seven ninety five. Auditor Marty three three four, Meyer eighty seven, Sat Gas five nine zero, Treasurer Cunningham three forty two, Hater six six eight. Public, School Public Lands Azure three forty eight, Greenfield six forty six. PUC Barth three three nine, Nelson six seventy zero, Senator District thirty three, right now. Two eight seven, Johnson six six zero, Representative District thirty three, but, but all. Three nine four, Massey five five, uh, four five six, Jensen five three seven. Devaney, yes, six six eight, no, two two five, Salter six seven three, yes. Two one six, no. Wickrey three ninety eight, Connolly three eighty nine, Lindgren four twenty three, Hendrickson. Three seventy nine, position E Fifeley four twenty, position F Fifeley four hundred. Kaczynski three eighty four, Brown three eighty seven, Amendment D, yes. Six thirty eight, no, four one two, I am twenty seven, yes, five forty eight, no, five one five.
No provisional.
Trying to get you out of your seat, bingo, but you tried to go slow.
Can I open those?
Four, four, four.
Four, four, four?
Yep.
Can I open those? Um, it's gonna be easier if we just keep them in order. I won't take my order, I'll just open and talk. You wanna just slice them?
Slice them only after you get done with a re-three, because when I get ready to disc, we're gonna get blocking. I know, you and I are thinking in similar. All right, one seventy nine ballots, vote, ballots voted, I said ballots voted. Three on the same day. Zero not counted. Total cast of six two five. I'm ready to read.
Kind of a nice guy. Did you tell me that number one more time?
Six two five?
Okay.
We're good?
Yep.
Senator Bangs two forty eight, Lesnar forty eight, Thun three one seven, Representative Duprell two thirty, Johnson three twenty seven. Governor Smith two eighty eight, Quint thirty two, Noam two ninety seven, Secretary of State Cool two ninety five, Johnson two ninety three. Attorney General Jackley three forty five, Auditor Marty six, two sixty three, Meyer fifty five, Sat Gas. Two seventy one, Treasurer Cunningham two eighty three, Hater two ninety five, School and Public Lands Azure two eighty five, Greenfield. Turning five, PUC Barth.
Four, you mean?
Two eighty four, Azure Greenfield two ninety five.
Okay, thank you.
PUC Barth two eighty nine, Nelson two eighty five, Senator District thirty two Heenan.
Okay.
Two sixty eight. Do Hamel three twenty two, Representative District thirty two Old Horse.
They got it.
Two fifty one, Stevenson two hundred, Drury two twenty four, Duffy two forty nine, Devaney. Yes, three sixty five, no, one fifty eight.
Three sixty four.
You're right, three sixty four, and there's that one oh five next to it, and you can read fact. Three sixty four, yes, no, one fifty eight, uh, Salter, yes, three fifty eight, no, one sixty. Uh, Wickrey two oh one, Connolly one eighty five, Lindgren two one three, Hendrickson one eighty. Position E Fifeley one ninety six, position F Fifeley one eighty four. Kaczynski one seventy eight, Brown one eighty nine, Amendment D, yes, four thirty seven, no, one sixty six. I am twenty seven, yes, three ninety four, no, two nineteen. Provisional, no. Three twenty five. One thirty two absentee. One day out. One not counted. Total is four fifty seven. Yeah, we're waiting on you now, gotta read. Four dash five. Senator Bangs one thirty, Lesnar with thirty one, Thun two eighty two, Representative Duprell one thirty five, Johnson two eighty six. Governor Smith one sixty eight, Quint twenty one, Noam two sixty three, Secretary of State Cool one fifty seven, Johnson. Two seventy five, AG Jackley three oh eight. Auditor Marty one forty three, Meyer forty, Sat Gas two forty five, Treasurer Cunningham one forty three, Hater two seventy eight. P, uh, like, uh, School and Public Lands Azure one forty nine, Greenfield two sixty four. PUC Barth one forty six, Nelson two seventy four, Senator District thirty five Castleberry. Two ninety three, Representative District thirty five Crumlin. One thirty eight, Hubbard one twenty four, Ri- Randolph two thirty nine, Malala two twenty. Devaney, yes, two fifty five, no, one oh five, Salter, yes, two fifty seven, no, one oh one. Wickrey one fifty, Connolly one forty eight, Lindgren one fifty eight, Hendrickson one forty one, position E Fifeley one sixty two. Position F Fifeley one fifty six, presents me one forty six, Brown one forty four. Amendment D, yes, two sixty five, no, one seventy six, I am twenty seven, yes, two fifty four, no, one nine six. One provisional.
And it was not counted.
And provisional non-counted, okay, three three nine. Total votes, two eighty two. Oh, there's not any on the same day, so, none on the same day, one uncounted. Total class six one eight. Senator Bangs two sixteen, Lesnar thirty nine, Thun three fifty five, Representative Duprell one eighty five, Johnson three sixty seven. Governor Smith two eighty eight, Quint twenty four, Noam three oh two, Secretary of State Cool two sixty, Johnson three twenty three. AG Jackley four oh one, Auditor Marty two forty seven, Meyer fifty six, Sat Gas two eighty two. Treasurer Cunningham two fifty nine, Hater three one six, uh, School and Public Lands Azure two fifty four, Greenfield three one eight. PUC Barth two thirty eight, Nelson three three two, Senator District thirty four Dietrich. Three seventy six, Representative District thirty four Drew.
Go.
Two forty seven, Schultz one ninety two, Olson two sixty six, Derby three oh three, Devaney, yes, three ninety. No, one twenty nine, Salter, yes, three eighty nine, no, one twenty seven. Wickrey two twenty eight, Connolly two thirty, Lindgren two forty four, Hendrickson two twenty. Position E Fifeley two forty four, position F Fifeley two thirty eight. Kaczynski two twenty one, Brown two twenty seven, Amendment D, yes, three eighty, Amendment D, no. Two twenty three, I am twenty seven, yes, three forty five, no, two sixty four. Provisional one. And five one six.
Provisional is not counted.
Okay. Total ballots voted, three fifty one. Day of absentee two. Uncounted two. Total. Cast eight six eight. All right, Senator Bangs, three twenty seven, Lesnar fifty four, Thun four sixty nine, Representative Duprell. Two sixty nine, Johnson five twenty six, Governor Smith four twenty four, Quint thirty six, Noam three ninety eight. Secretary of State Cool four oh two, Johnson four twenty four, AG Jackley five thirty six, Auditor Marty three six five, Meyer six five. Sat Gas three seventy nine, Treasurer Cunningham three ninety, Hater four twenty one, Public Lands Azure three ninety four. Greenfield four one six, PUC Barth three seventy eight, Nelson four thirty one, Senator District thirty four Dietrich. Five oh three, District thirty four Representative Drew. Three ninety one, Schultz two seventy, Olson three fifty, Derby four oh four, Devaney. Yes, four eighty three, no, two oh five, Salter, yes, four eighty nine, two oh two, no. Wickrey two eighty five, Connolly two eighty seven, Lindgren three sixteen, Hendrickson two seventy two. Position E Fifeley three twenty eight, position F Fifeley three ten, Kaczynski two seventy five. Brown two seventy eight, Amendment D, yes, five eighty three, no, two sixty five. I am twenty seven, yes, five forty six, no, three oh nine. One more round, and then we get, take a quick break, seven oh five.
One provisional, but it was not counted. Say it one more time with that, seven oh five.
Seven oh five. I'm gonna assume that that's five ninety, and they put plus one, or is it, probably because they thought the provisional?
Let's look at the back of this, just to make sure. Five ninety.
Or absentees on the day of? Zero non-counting. Total cast, one two nine eight.
Good to go.
Good to go, Senator Bangs four fifty six, Lesnar seventy two, Thun seven forty eight, Representative Duprell three ninety two, Johnson seven eighty eight. Governor Smith five eighty five, Quint forty nine, no, six forty six, State, uh, Secretary of State Cool. Five sixty, Johnson six seventy five, AG Jackley eight seventy five. Auditor Marty five oh three, Meyer one oh three, Sat Gas six oh eight. Treasurer Cunningham five one seven, Hater six nine zero, Public Land Azure five thirty seven, Greenfield six six four. PUC Barth four ninety nine, Nelson seven oh five, Senator District thirty four Dietrich. Seven eighty five, Representative District thirty four Drew.
Dietrich is what? You got it.
Seventy five, Drew. Five sixty two, Schultz three sixty five, Olson five ninety, Jeremy six twenty five. Devaney, yes, seven fifty three, no, two seventy seven, Salter, yes, seven fifty four, no, two sixty six. Wickrey four four five, Connolly four six zero, Lindgren four eight zero. Hendrickson four two eight, Fifeley, position E five one five, position F Fifeley five one zero. Uh, Kaczynski four four five, Brown four four zero. Uh, Amendment D, yes, seventy six, no, four six six. Twenty seven is, yes, four seven thirty five, no, five forty two. Do we need, do we need to recess for a second, take a break? Wait for a five minute break?
Five minute break, okay? Are we ready to go back into session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's just return.
All right, um, eight ninety seven. Plus two provisional.
Which were not counted.
Okay, the provisionals were not counted. Total ballots voted, six six five. Day of absentees, seven. Non-counted one. Total cast, one five seven two.
That's exactly what you said.
No, one five seven two, you're off.
Oh, I'm missing one.
You were only three off a while ago. Good?
Yep.
Senator Bangs seven twenty three, Lesnar ninety one, Thun seven twenty four, Representative Duprell. Five one eight, Johnson eight thirty four, Governor Smith eight ninety eight, Quint fifty eight, Noam six hundred. Secretary of State Cool eight thirty seven, Johnson six thirty three, AG Jackley eight eight six, Auditor. Marty seven six zero, Meyer one one three, Sat Gas five nine seven. Treasurer Cunningham seven ninety six, Hater six six three, Public Lands Azure eight oh two, Greenfield six forty eight. Uh, PUC Barth seven seven three, Nelson six seventy five, Senator District thirty two Heenan. Seven seven eight, Duhamel seven twenty two, District thirty two Representative Old Horse. Six thirty nine, Stevenson seven seven two, Drury five thirty four, Duffy five eighty nine. Devaney, yes, eight forty seven, no, three sixty two, Salter, yes, eight fifty, no, three fifty five. Wickrey four seventy two, Connolly five one two, Lindgren five thirty four, Hendrickson fi- four fifty eight. Position E Fifeley six hundred, position F Fifeley five seventy six. Kaczynski four eighty five, Brown four seventy two, Amendment D, yes, one 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 six, no, four oh seven. I mean, uh, I am se- uh, twenty seven, yes, one zero six zero, no, four ninety seven. No provisional. No provisional. Poll book one, four thirty-two. Poll book two. Five oh-one. District five-five. Total ballots, one-zero. I'm gonna say it's a two-zero, one-zero-two-zero, or is it a one-zero-two-six?
It's one-zero-two-six, I looked at the back of the book.
One-zero-two-zero is what it looks like, yeah. Seven on the day of. Four not counted. Total cast, one-nine-five-seven.
Just one second, I'll catch up with you. Good enough.
Good enough. Senator Bangs, five eighty-eight, Lesnar, one oh-two, Thune, one-two-two-six, Dupre. Four fifty-four, Johnson, one-three-two-zero. Governor Smith, seven-seven-eight, Quinn, six-six, Noam, one-zero-eight-five, Secretary of State Cool, seven-one-zero. Johnson, one-one-two-two. A.G. Jackley, one-four-zero-three, Auditor Marty, six-three-zero, Meyer, one-two-seven, Sat Gas, one-zero-five-zero. Treasurer Cunningham, six-four-six, Hader, one-one-four-zero. Public Lands, Azure, six-six-three, Greenfield, one-one-zero-five. P.U.C., Barth, six-two-zero, Nelson, one-one-six-one. Senator, District Thirty-four, Dietrich. One-two-three-five, Representative District Thirty-four, Drew. Seven-three-zero, Schultz, four-eight-three, Olson, nine-seven-four, Derby, one-zero-eight-two. Devaney, yes, one-two-two-three, no, three-three-one. Salter, yes, one-two-one-six, no, three-three-two. Wickrey, seven-one-zero, Connolly, seven-three-one, Lindgren, seven-seven-nine, Hendrickson, six-eight-nine. Position E. Fifeley, nine oh-two, Position F. Fifeley, eight-eight-three. Gazinski, seven-hundred, Brown, seven oh-one, Amendment D., yes, one-one-two-four, no, seven-six-three. I am twenty-seven, yes, nine-two-zero, no, one-zero-zero-five. Put them all together, keep them together.
This one was. America's way.
All right, poll book. Forty-eight. No provisionals. Total ballots, two-three-two-eight. However, what's this number?
We were making sure we. We were kind of getting our process down, so I just wrote it on there, what should be on here.
So, the other, oh, so it's over here?
Yeah, but this is, this should be that number that is on there.
Seventy-seven, oh, okay, yep, yep. There we go, that number's there, matches. Thirty-one were not counted. Two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven total cast.
Four hundred and twenty-seven, right?
Two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven, do you have that?
Twenty-four, twenty-two, we're good.
All right, Senator Bangs, six oh-seven, Lesnar, sixty-two, Thune, one-seven-five-zero, Representative Dupre. Four-five-four, Johnson, one-seven-five-eight, Governor Smith, six twenty-four, Quinn, twenty-seven, Noam, one-seven-six-eight. Secretary of State Cool, six thirty-nine, Johnson, one-seven-five-one. A.G. Jackley, one-seven-six-nine. Auditor. Marty, five-six, uh, five-nine-one, Meyer, sixty-two, Sat Gas, one-seven-two-nine. Treasurer Cunningham, six oh-two, Hader, one-seven-six-five. P., uh, Public Lands, Azure, six oh-four, Greenfield, one-seven-four-six, P.U.C. Barth, five-nine-one, Nelson, one-seven-four-five, Senator, District Thirty-five, Castleberry. One-seven-four-seven, Representative District Thirty-five, Cromwell. Six oh-five, Hubbard, five oh-nine, Randolph, one-five-one-four, Malali, one-six-eight-five. Devaney, yes, one-five-one-five, no, four-one-four. Salter, yes, one-five-zero-eight, no, three-nine-eight. Wickrey, eight fifty-seven, Connolly, eight-one-four, Lindgren, seven ninety-seven, Hendrickson, eight oh-nine. Position E. Fifeley, eight-ten, Position F. Fifeley, seven-nine-zero. Gazinski, eight-zero-eight. Brown, seven-nine-seven, Amendment D., yes, one-zero-zero-five, no, one-two-four-seven. I am twenty-seven, yes, one-one, five-one, no, one-one, five-seven.
Should be no provisionals.
Two poll books, one says six ninety-one. The next one is. Five forty-three. No provisional. No provisional.
Come with all of our election stuff that gets stored.
Total ballots, six-two-eight. Fifteen on the day of. Eight not counted. Total votes. One-eight-six-six is the total. All right, Deb. So you're coming, you're going too slow. Senator Bangs, four thirty-five, Lesnar, one-one-two, Thune, one-two-eight-eight. Representative Dupre, four sixty-eight, Johnson, one-two-eight-six. Governor Smith, four-five-four-nine, Quinn, one oh-two, Noam, one-one-nine-six. Secretary of State Cool, five twenty-one, Johnson, one-two-four-four, Attorney General Jackley, one-three-three-nine. Auditor Marty, four-seven-three, Meyer, one-seven-seven, Sat Gas, one-one-zero-zero. Cunningham, five-one-two, five-one-zero, Hader, one-two-two-two. Public Lands, Azure, five oh-five, Greenfield, one-two-two-two. Commissioner, P.U.C., Barth, four-seven-nine, Nelson, one-two-four-one. Senator, District Thirty-five, Castleberry. One-two-nine-four, Representative District Thirty-five, Cromwell. Four-eight-two, Hubbard, four-four-six, Randolph, one-zero-one-three, Malali, one-zero-nine-five. Devaney, yes. One-one-nine-eight, no, three-seven-eight, Salter, yes, one-one-eight-eight, no, three-seven-eight. Uh, Wickrey, seven twenty-two, Connolly, seven-one-four, Lindgren, seven twenty-one, Hendrickson, six ninety-two. Position E. Fifeley, seven-one-eight, Position F. Fifeley, six ninety-three. Gazinski, six seventy-eight, Brown, seven oh-three, Amendment D., yes, one-zero-six-nine, no, seven thirty-six. I am twenty-seven, yes, one-zero-four-one, no, seven-nine-one.
Should be no provisional.
No provisional, and. Four-four-two. Total voted, one fifty-five. Day of, one. Not counted, one. Total, five-nine-seven. Senator Bangs. Seventy, Lesnar, forty, Thune, four seventy-seven, Representative Dupre. One-twenty-two, Johnson, four-four-six, Governor Smith, ninety-five, Quinn, eighteen, Noam, four eighty. Secretary of State Cool, ninety-four, Johnson, four seventy-one, A.G. Jackley, four ninety-one, Auditor Marty. Eighty-five, Meyer, twenty-seven, Sat Gas, four fifty-one, Treasurer Cunningham, eighty-three, Hader, forty-four seventy-seven. Public Lands, A- Azure, eighty-six, Greenfield, four sixty-seven, P.U.C., Barth, seventy-six, Nelson, four seventy-seven. Senator, District Twenty-seven, Don Foster.
Foster?
Foster. Yep, District Twenty-seven.
Okay, hold on a sec, right here, go.
Eighty-three, Jones, four seventy-seven. Representative District Twenty-seven, Poyer. Is it Poyer? Poyer, Poyer? Ninety-three, Rendon, sixty-five, May, Liz May, four twelve, Bud May, four twenty. Devaney, yes, three seventy-four, no, ninety-one. Salter, yes, three sixty-eight, no, ninety-six. Wickrey, two oh-eight, Connolly, two twelve, Lindgren, two twenty-two, Hendrickson, two oh-five, Position E. Fifeley, two oh-nine. Position F. Fifeley, two seventeen, Gazinski, one ninety-seven, Brown, two oh-seven, Amendment D., yes, two twenty-four, no, three fifty-one. I am twenty-seven, yes, two twelve, no, three seventy-one.
Gold dress. No provisional.
Three oh-nine.
What do we do after count all these? And then you can adjourn.
Two seventy-five. Absentees. One day of.
Don, look at your pile. Yours is very.
Total, five-eight-six.
Are you doing your canvas for your district anywhere?
Well, I'm just telling, yeah.
Good?
No, I'm just.
We are good.
Senator Bangs, one-five-zero. Lesnar, twenty-four, Thune, four oh-nine, Representative Dupre, one-seventeen, Johnson, four twenty-two. Governor Smith, two oh-seven, Quinn, one-six. Noam, three fifty-six, Secretary of State Cool, one eighty-two, Johnson, three seventy-four. A.G. Jackley, four thirty, Auditor Marty, one sixty-four, Meyer, twenty-six, Sat Gas, three sixty-four. Treasurer Cunningham, one sixty-five, Hader, three eighty-eight, Public Lands, Azure, one seventy-two, Greenfield, three seventy-eight. P.U.C., Barth, one sixty-one, Nelson, three eighty-eight, Senator, District Thirty-four, Dietrich. Three ninety-five, Representative District Thirty-four, Drew. One eighty-one, Schultz, one thirty-three, Olson, three sixteen, Derby, three sixty-nine. Devaney, yes, three seventy-seven, no, ninety-two, Sh- Salter, yes, three seventy-five, no, eighty-seven. Wickrey, two twenty-six, Connolly, two eighteen, Lindgren, two forty-three, Hendrickson, two oh-seven. Position E. Fifeley, two fifty-four, Position F. Fifeley, two fifty-three. Gazinski, two twenty-six, Brown, two twelve. Amendment D., yes, two eighty-five, no, two eighty-eight. Measure twenty-seven, yes, two sixty-nine, no, three-one-three. Provisional one. Four-four-seven.
Provisional in this precinct? Was not counted.
Not counted, okay. Total ballots voted, one eighty-six. One day of absentee. One not counted. And total is six thirty-three. All right, Senator Bangs, one nineteen, Lesnar, twenty-one, Thune, four eighty-three, Representative Dupre, one seventeen, Johnson, four eighty-six. Governor Smith, one sixty-five, Quinn, sixteen, Noam, four forty-eight, Secretary of State Cool, one forty-three, Johnson, four fifty-eight. A.G. Jackley, five oh-seven, Auditor Marty, one thirty-five, Meyer, thirty-five, Sat Gas, four twenty-one. Treasurer Cunningham, one thirty-one, Hader, four fifty-eight. Public Lands, Azure, one thirty-seven, Greenfield, one, uh, four fifty-one. P.U.C., Barth, one thirty-one, Nelson, four sixty, Senator, District Thirty-three, Freidel. One eighteen, Johnson, four forty-eight, District, uh, Thirty-three, Representative Vanall. One sixty-eight, Mancy, three thirty-two, Jensen, three seventy-six. Devaney, yes, four thirty-five, no, ninety-four. Salter, yes, four forty-one, no, eighty-three. Wickrey, two fifty-eight, Connolly, two sixty-nine, Lindgren, two ninety-two.
Okay, two-six-nine.
Two-sixty-nine, Connolly, Lindgren, two ninety-two. Hendrickson, two fifty-five. Position E. Fifeley, three oh, uh, three oh-four, Position F. Fifeley, two ninety-seven. Gazinski, two fifty-three, Brown, two fifty-eight. Amendment D., two ninety-eight, yes, no, is three-one-four. Me- Measure twenty-seven, yes, two fifty-four, no, is three seventy-five. H.C. has two provisionals.
Only one was counted.
Okay, and eight forty-two. Total ballots voted, three eighty-two. Day of, six. Six absentees cast, one, non-counted. We have one provisional. And then total ballots cast, one-two-two-seven. Good, Senator. Bangs, two seventy-five, Lesnar, sixty-three, Thun- Thune, eight-six-eight. Uh, Dupre, Representative, two-four-seven, Johnson, nine hundred. Uh, Governor Smith, three forty-two, uh, Quinn, forty-one, Noam, eight twenty-eight. Cool, three forty-one, Johnson, eight thirty-one. A.G., nine-one-five, Auditor Marty, three-one-seven, Meyer, eighty-two. Sat Gas, seven fifty-four. Treasurer Cunningham, three twenty, Hader, eight-three-nine. Public Lands. Uh, Azure, three twenty-nine, Greenfield, eight oh-six. P.U.C., Barth, three-one-eight. Nelson, eight-two-one, Senator, District Thirty, Fry Mueller. Eight-one-six. Representative District Thirty, Swanson. Three oh-one, Kroll. Eight-seven-six. Ladner. Five forty-four, Devaney. Yes, seven eighty-five, no, one eighty-eight, Salter, yes, seven sixty-nine, no, one eighty-nine. Wickrey, one, uh, let's see here, that's four fifty. Connolly, four-four-four, Lindgren, four sixty-one, Hendrickson, four twenty-four. Position E. Fifeley, four fifty-four. Position F. Fifeley, four thirty-seven, Gazinski, four twenty-seven, Brown, four fifty. Amendment D. Yes, six thirty-three, no, five-five-four. I am twenty-seven, five-one-seven, no, six-eight-nine. One provisional for H.R.
And that was counted.
And it was counted. Six forty-four. Total ballots voted, six oh-seven. Day of, one. Not counted, zero. Provisionals are one. And ballots cast total, one-two-five-zero. All right, Senator Bangs, two-two-three, Lesnar, sixty-two, Thune, nine-five-three, Representative Dupre. Two-one-two, Johnson, nine-six-six. Governor Smith, three oh-one, Quinn, thirty-one, Noam, nine oh-seven. Secretary of State Cool, two-eight-three, Johnson, nine-two-six. Marty Jackley, one-zero-one-five, Auditor. Auditor Marty, two-five-seven, Meyer, seventy-one, Sat Gas, eight-five-seven. Hey, uh, Treasurer, hey, uh, Cunningham, two-five-nine, Hader, nine-two-three. Public Lands, Azure, two sixty-six, Greenfield, nine oh-seven. P.U.C., Barth, two fifty-four, Nelson, nine thirty-two. Senator, District Thirty, Fry Mueller. Eight fifty-eight. Representative District thirty, Swanson. Two seventy. Kroll, seven one seven. Ladner, seven eight two. Devaney, yes. Eight six three, no, one fifty-two, Salter, yes, eight five three, I'm sorry, eight five four. No, one fifty-five. Wickrey, five twenty-two. Conley, five oh five, Lindgren, five thirty-four, Hendrickson, four ninety-six. Position E, Fifeley, five seventy. One, five seventy-one, Position F, Fifeley. Five five two. Gazinski. Five oh three, Brown, five oh four, Amendment D. Yes, five four three, no, six seven two. I am twenty-seven, four six zero, yes, no, seven seven two. That works way better. One provisional for J.S.
Getting good at what was not counted.
Not counting? Eight ninety-nine total? Total ballots voted, three eighty-seven. Day of four. Not counted, two. Total cast, one, two, nine, zero. Senator Bangs, two eight seven, I can't do that, I'll spit it out. Uh, Lesnar, seventy-three, Thune, nine oh eight, Representative DePrelle, two seventy, Johnson, nine forty-four, Governor. Smith, three eighty, Quinn, forty-one, Gnome, eight six zero, Secretary State Cool, three forty-eight, Johnson, eight eight nine. Attorney General Jackley, nine seventy, Auditor Marty, three oh seven, Meyer, seventy-two, Sat Gas. Eight fifty-two, Cunningham for Treasurer, three twenty-two, Hater, eight nine six, Public Lands Azure, three one six, Greenfield, eight eighty. P.U.C. Barth, three oh nine, Nelson, nine one nine, Senator, District thirty-three, Freidel. Two eighty-three, Johnson, eight ninety-five, Representative District thirty-three, Vennall. Three eighty-five, Massey, six sixty-four, Jensen, seven one two, Devaney, yes, eight one nine, no, two one seven. Salter, yes, eight one four, no, two one five. Wickrey, four fifty-seven, Conley, four fifty-nine, Lindgren, four eighty-four, Hendrickson, four thirty-two. Position E, Fifeley, five oh four, Position F, Fifeley, four eight zero, Gazinski, four thirty-five, Brown, four four two. Amendment D, yes, six one nine, no, six three seven, Measure twenty-seven, yes, five eight one, no, six eight seven. Provisional none. Three sixty-nine. This is K.Y. Um, so, to- uh, total ballots voted, one fifty-seven. Two day of. One not counted. Total, five two six. Good. Senator Bangs, one one nine, Lesnar, twenty-five, Thune, three seventy-five, Representative DePrelle, one oh four, Johnson, three eighty-four. Governor Smith, one forty-four, Quinn, twenty, Gnome, three fifty-six, Secretary State Cool, one fifty-four, Manay Johnson. Three fifty-three, Attorney General Jackley, three eighty-three, Auditor Marty, one thirty-one, Meyer, twenty-four, Sat Gas, three forty-nine. Cunningham, one thirty-nine, Hater, three sixty-two, Public Lands Azure, one thirty-one, Greenfield, three sixty. P.U.C. Barth, one thirty-six, Nelson, three sixty-nine, Senator, District thirty, Fry Mueller. Three three two, Representative District thirty, Swanson. One forty, Kroll, one, uh, three one two, Ladner, two fifty-four, Devaney, yes, three one two, no, ninety-seven. Salter, yes, three twenty, no, eighty-eight. Wickrey, one sixty-six, Conley, one sixty-four, Lindgren, one sixty-seven, Hendrickson, one fifty-eight. Position E, Fifeley, one sixty-eight, Position F, Fifeley, one sixty-two, Gazinski, one fifty, Brown, one sixty-one, Amendment D, two sixty-two, yes. No is two forty-eight, Measure twenty-seven, yes, two thirty-eight. No is two eighty-two. Provisional none. And two eighty-three. Total ballots voted, one twenty-three. Absentee day of, two. No uncounted for District L.S. Total ballots cast, four oh eight. Senator Bangs, fifty-eight, Lesnar, nineteen, Thune, three twenty-three, Representative DePrelle, sixty-four, Johnson, three twenty-three. Governor Smith, eighty-seven, Quinn, eight, Gnome, three oh nine, Secretary State Cool, eighty, Johnson, three one two. A.G. Jackley, thirty-three six, Auditor Marty, sixty-six, Meyer, twenty-three, Sat Gas, three oh four. Treasurer Cunningham, seventy-four, Hater, three one eight, Public Lands Azure, seventy-one, Greenfield, three one eight, P.U.C. Barth, seventy-two, Nelson, three nineteen. Senator, District thirty, Fry Mueller. Two eighty-eight, Representative District thirty, Swanson. Eighty-three, Kroll, two two six, Ladner, two seventy-one, Devaney, yes, two sixty-one, no, sixty-five, Salter, yes, two fifty. Nine, no, sixty-eight, Wickrey, one fifty, Conley, one fifty-one, Lindgren, one fifty-one, Hendrickson, one forty-eight. Position E, Fifeley, one fifty, Position F, Fifeley, one fifty-nine, Gazinski, one forty-seven, Brown, one fifty-four. Amendment D, yes, one fifty-six, no, two forty-two, Measure twenty-seven, yes, one twenty-nine, no, two seventy. However, I'm not using that same language, but I can speak fast. No provisional.
These are kind of lined out pretty easy.
Fifty-eight. And twenty-six.
Look over there, Ron.
I'm gonna time this one.
Oh, you're gonna see how fast it takes me? Absentee total ballots voted, seventy-one. Not counted is zero.
Next one, I'll do that.
Total, one fifty-six.
Just when he started, good to go.
Ready? Bangs, thirty-three, Lesnar, fifteen, Thune, one oh six, Representative DePrelle, forty-one, Johnson, one oh two. Governor Smith, forty-two, Quinn, one, eleven, Gnome, one oh two, Secretary State Cool, one forty-one, Johnson, one oh four, Jackley, one thirteen. Auditor Marty, thirty-six, Meyer, twelve, Sat Gas, ninety-nine, Treasurer Cunningham, thirty-six, Hater, one oh nine. Public Lands Azure, thirty-four, Greenfield, one ten, P.U.C. Barth, three, thirty-four, Nelson, one oh five, Senator, District thirty-five, Castleberry. One ten, Representative District thirty-five, Cromwell. Thirty-six, Hubbard, thirty-three, Randolph, ninety-five, Mulally, ninety-nine, Devaney, yes, ninety-three, no, thirty-six. Salter, yes, ninety-six, no, thirty-six, Wickrey, fifty-nine, Conley, fifty-six, Lindgren, fifty-seven, Sir Hendrickson. Fifty-six, Position E, Fifeley, sixty, Position F, Fifeley, fifty-six, Gazinski, fifty-six, Brown, fifty-six, Amendment D, yes, eighty-four, no, sixty-eight. Measure twenty-seven, yes, eighty-two, no, seventy-three.
Well, that's about fifty seconds.
Good job, Travis.
Full books.
There should be no provisionals.
Um, four ninety-three. One oh one total ballots voted for absentee. And it looks like none on day of, zero non-counts. Zero non-counts, and are we ready? Uh, total is five ninety-four. Bangs, seventy-one, Lesnar, twenty-nine, Thune, four eighty-five, Representative Dupra- Duprell, one oh nine, Johnson, four sixty, Governor. Smith, eighty-five, Quinn, eleven, Gnome, four ninety, Secretary State Cool, eighty-eight, Johnson, four eighty, Attorney General Jackley, four ninety-seven, Auditor Marty, seventy-nine. Meyer, twenty-nine, Sat Gas, four fifty-two, Treasurer Cunningham, eighty-one, Hater, four seventy-five, Public Lands Azure, eighty-six, Greenfield, four sixty-six. P.U.C. Barth, eighty-four, Nelson, four seventy-eight, Senator, District twenty-seven, Foster. Eighty-three, Jones, four eighty-four, District twenty-seven, Representative Poyer. Eighty-one, Render, sixty-four, May, four thirty-eight, Bud, May, four fourteen. Devaney, yes, three sixty-eight, no, one hundred, Salter, yes, three seventy-one, no, ninety-seven. Wickrey, two oh four, Conley, two oh eight, Lindgren, two twenty-four, Hendrickson, one ninety-six. Position E, Fifeley, two oh nine, Position F, Fifeley, two ten, Gazinski, two hundred, Brown, one ninety-nine. Amendment D, yes, two forty-five, no, three twenty-eight. Measure twenty-seven, yes, one ninety-seven, no, three eighty-seven.
Come on, you must have nine months.
Provisional, no. Two oh one. This is Q.U.
There was actually one provisional. And they did not have them sign the full book.
Okay. And I have now at two oh one. Total ballots voted, thirty-four. Um, thinking there's no, um, uncounted. We have one. Provisional, I just like totally left it, and then, two thirty-four for total cast. Ready, rock and roll? I just wanna make sure she's good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Senator Bangs, thirteen, Lesnar, twenty-nine, Thune, one eighty-seven. Representative Duprell, fifty-two, Johnson, one seventy-three, Governor. Uh, Smith, nineteen, Quinn, four, Gnome, two eleven, Secretary State Cool, seventeen, Johnson, two oh seven. Jackley is one ninety, Marty for Auditor, sixteen, Meyer, seventeen, one eighty-eight for Sat Gas. Treasurer Cunningham, nineteen, Hater, one, two hundred. Uh, Lands, Public Lands, Azure, seventeen, Greenfield, two oh four, Barth. Seventeen, two oh six for Nelson, Senator, District twenty-seven. Um, Foster is sixteen, Jones is two twelve, Representative twenty-seven. Poyer is, Poyer is eighteen. Rendon is eighteen, Liz May is one ninety-one, Bud May is one ninety. Devaney. Yes, one twenty-six, no, forty-three, Salter. One twenty-six, no, forty. Wickrey, fifty-four. Conley, fifty-six, Lindgren, fifty-five, Hendrickson, fifty-six, Position E, Fifeley, fifty-one, Position F, Fifeley, fifty-three. Gazinski, fifty-four, Brown, fifty-four, Amendment D is sixty-two, yes, no is one sixty-one. And I am twenty-seven is, yes, thirty-eight, no, one ninety-one. Eighteen for R.K. No provisioner. You're gonna totally mess me up. Total ballots voted, eighteen.
Did you say that's what was in the poll book was eighteen?
Is that what I told? Heck, man, it went out of my brain.
I hear ya.
Eighteen.
Okay, well, eighteen at the polls and eighteen absentee.
Uh, two non-voted. Unvoted, I should say.
Not counted.
Not counted. Total is thirty-four. Ready? Senator Bangs, two, Lesnar, four, Thune, twenty-eight, Duprell, six, Johnson, twenty-seven, Governor. Smith, five, Quinn, one, Gnome, twenty-eight, Secretary State Cool, six, Johnson, twenty-seven. Uh, A.G. Jackley, twenty-five, Auditor Marty, four, Meyer, four, Sat Gas, twenty-five. Treasurer Cunningham, four, Hater, twenty-seven, Azure, four, Greenfield, twenty-eight, P.U.C. Barth, three, Nelson, twenty-nine. Senator District thirty, Fry Mueller. Twenty-six, Representative District thirty, Swanson. Five, Kroll, twenty, Ladner, twenty-four. Devaney, yes, twenty-four, no, three, Salter, yes, twenty-five, no, three. Wickrey, sixteen, Conley, sixteen, Lindgren, seventeen, Hendrickson, sixteen. Position E, Fifeley, twenty, Position F, Fifeley, twenty, Gazinski, sixteen, Brown, eighteen, Amendment D, yes, fourteen, no, seventeen. Measure twenty-seven, yes, seven, no, twenty-five.
R.V. in there was one provisional.
It looks like seven hundred and fifty. R.B., one provisional. That's in there, I'm guessing that's provisional, it's kind of loose, nope, hold on. Unless they took it out there, cause it says that's a total of seven fifty-one, if it, if it came into that.
Looks like that's what happened.
Nope, I just wanna make sure that there's no other. I did say seven fifty-one, there's no provisional listed, so unless that last one was.
Yeah, and then we did receive one provisional was counted.
Total ballots voted, three forty-five. Absentees, day of absentees is two. Uncounted votes, two. You got one, you just got one provisional, right?
That is correct.
And then total cast, one zero nine six. Senator Bangs, two forty-eight, Lesnar, seventy-four, Thune, seven fifty-eight. Duprell, two sixty-three, Johnson, seven five eight. Smith, three forty-three, Quinn, sixty-two, Gnome, six seven seven. Cool, three one five, Johnson, seven oh eight. Jackley, seven eight eight. Marty, two eighty, Meyer, ninety-seven, Sat Gas, six thirty-six. Cunningham, two ninety-seven, Hater, seven oh two, Public Lands Azure. Two ninety-two, Greenfield, six ninety-one. Barth, two ninety-five, Nelson, seven one one, Senator, District thirty-five, Castleberry. Seven thirty-nine, Representative District thirty-five, Cromwell. Two ninety-four, Hubbard, two sixty-two, Randolph, six ten, Mulally, six sixteen. Devaney, yes, six ninety-seven, no, one ninety-seven, Salter. Yes, six seventy-four, no, two twelve, Wickrey, four twenty-one. Conley, four twenty-four. Lindgren, four forty-seven. Hendrickson, four oh eight. Position E, Fifeley, four four five, Position F, Fifeley, four three four. Gazinski, four twenty-two, Brown, four ten, Amendment D, yes. Six twenty-four, no, four fifty, I am twenty-seven, yes, five eighty-four, no, five oh one. What? Those are hard.
Here's one.
She said last provisional.
What'd she do? There should be none anywhere.
Ooh.
See?
One, one provisional.
Oh, but was not counted.
One twenty-two.
Keep up the goose.
Yes, Grandma. Oh, Grandma.
Could be soon.
Total ballots voted one oh four. Zero non-voted. Total is two twenty-six. Senator Bangs forty-eight, Lesnar fourteen, Thune one fifty-eight, Dupre forty-four, Johnson one fifty-nine, Governor Smith seventy-three, Quint fifteen, Gnome one thirty-eight, Secretary of State Cool sixty-four, Johnson one fifty-three, AG Jackley one sixty-five, Auditor Marty sixty-two, Meyer sixteen, Sat Gas one thirty-five, Treasurer Cunningham sixty-four, Hater one forty-six, Public Lands Azure fifty-nine, Greenfield one forty-seven, PUC Barth sixty-two, Nelson one forty-nine, Senator District thirty-three Fryell?
Got it.
Fifty-two, Johnson one forty-eight, District thirty-three Representative Vidal? Sixty-three, Massey ninety-five, Jensen one thirty-five, Devaney, yes, one thirty-six, no, fifty-one, Salter? One thir-, yes, one thirty-four, no, fifty-one, Wickrey eighty-two, Conley eighty-one, Lindgren eighty-three, Hendrickson seventy-seven, Position E five-fully eighty-five, Position F five-fully eighty, Position, uh, see Gazinski seventy-eight, Brown seventy-seven, Amendment D, yes, one thirty, no, ninety-three, Measure twenty-seven, yes, one twenty, no, one oh five.
Good.
Can I duck that, can I duck that to you?
No, plus you wanted to do that tape. There was one, but it was not counted.
So, one listed, not counted. One zero eight seven. Total ballots counted, three five one, are voted, three five one voted. Three absentees the day of. Four non-count, no count. Total, one four four one.
Good.
Senator Bangs two eighty-six, Lesnar ninety-four, Thune one zero two six, Representative Dupre three fifty-six, Johnson nine eighty-eight, Governor Smith. Huh? Three fifty-nine?
I thought you said three fifty-six.
Three fifty-nine, Johnson nine eighty-eight, Governor Smith three ninety-five, Quint seventy-two, Gnome three nine fifty-two, Secretary of State Cool three sixty-four, Johnson nine eighty-six, AG Jackley one zero five four, Auditor Marty three one five, Meyer one thirty, Sat Gas eight eighty-one, Cunningham three three six, Hater nine seven two, Public Lands Azure three fifty, Greenfield nine fifty-three, PUC Barth three one five, Nelson nine nine five, Senator District thirty Fry Newer? Nine forty-nine, District thirty Swanson?
Got it.
Three seventy-two, Kroll six six six, Ladner eight one seven, Devaney, yes, nine twenty-eight, no, two thirty-three, Salter, yes, nine twelve, no, two forty-two, Wickrey five thirty-three, Conley five five one, Lindgren five six seven, Hendricks five two nine, Position E five-fully five five eight, Position F five-fully five five eight, Gazinski five twenty-eight, Brown five thirty-one, Amendment D, yes, seven sixty-eight, no, six thirty-three, Measure twenty-seven, yes, seven seven six, no, six five one.
Yep.
One two three four? No provisional.
Seven twenty-four.
Forty-two and four. So I'm reading good ones for all this.
Ballots voted three seventy.
Everybody awake?
Non-counts, two. Total is one zero nine three. Senator Bangs two thirty-four, Lesnar forty-six, Thune seventy-three, Representative Dupre two thirty-six, Johnson seven seven nine, Governor Smith three twenty-one, Quint forty-four, Gnome seven ten, Secretary of State Cool two ninety-six, Johnson seven seven, seven one seven, Attorney General Jackley eight one three, Auditor Marty two six three, Meyer sixty-six, Sat Gas six six seven, Treasurer Cunningham two eight two, Hater seven one seven, Public Lands Azure two seventy-nine, Greenfield seven oh five, PUC Barth two seventy, Nelson seven one nine, Senator District thirty-five Castleberry?
Got it.
Seven fifty-seven. Representative District thirty-five Cromwell?
Got it.
Two sixty-six, Hubbard two thirty-four, Randolph six one seven, uh, six one eight, Mulally six twenty-five, Devaney, yes, six nine six, no, one eighty-two, Salter, yes, six nine two, no, one eighty-four, Wickrey four thirty-one, Conley four twenty-three, Lindgren four four one, Hendrickson four twenty-one, Position E five-fully four thirty-one, Position F five-fully four thirty-six, Position G Gazinski four one seven, Brown four one four, Amendment D, yes, five seventy, no, four ninety, Measure twenty-seven, yes, five forty-six, no, five thirty-four.
Travis Cromwell, two sixty-six.
Cromwell?
Yep, two sixty-six, two thirty-four, six one eight.
What?
Two five. Cromwell's?
Cromwell, where are we at?
Yeah.
Oh, Cromwell, tw- two sixty-six, two thirty-four, six eighteen, six twenty-five. I'm like, what are you talking about? Alright, uh, WL? Three twenty-three? Ballots voted fifty-one. Two on the day of. Zero no counts. Total, oh, three seventy-six.
Perfect.
Senator Bangs thirty-three, Lesnar thirteen, Thune three twenty-four, Dupre fifty-seven, Johnson three oh nine, Smith sixty-one, Quint eight, Gnome three oh two, Secretary of State Cool sixty, Johnson two ninety-one, AG Jackley three fourteen, Auditor Marty fifty-five, Meyer twenty, Sat Gas two seventy-three, Cunningham fifty-six, Hater two ninety, Public Lands Azure fifty-one, Greenfield two eighty-eight, PUC Barth fifty-two, Nelson two ninety-seven, Senator District twenty-seven Foster? Fifty-five, Jones two ninety-three, Representative District twenty-seven Poyer?
Poyer.
Poyer, sixty-one, Rendon forty-four, Liz May two sixty-eight, Budmay two sixty, Devaney, yes, two forty-six, no, fifty-nine, Salter, yes, two fifty-three, no, fifty-one, Wickrey one twenty-nine, Conley one thirty-two, Lindgren one twenty-eight, Hendrickson one twenty-four, Position E five-fully one twenty-five, Position F five-fully one twenty-five, Gazinski one eighteen, Brown one twenty-two, Amendment D, yes, one fifty-nine, no, two oh four, Measure twenty-seven, yes, one ten, no, two fifty-nine.
Yep.
Eighty. Total ballots voted on the absentee, two. Zero non-counted. Total cast eighty-two. Senator Bangs five, Lesnar six, Thune seventy-one, Representative Dupre fifteen, Johnson sixty-three, Smith five, Quint four, Gnome seventy-one, Cool nine, Johnson seventy-one, Jackley seventy-one, Marty eight, Meyer five, Sat Gas sixty-eight, Cunningham nine, Hater seventy-three, Azure nine, Greenfield seventy, Barth eight, Nelson seventy-three, District twenty-seven Senator Foster? Eight, Jones seventy-four, District twenty-seven Poyer, Poyer? Six, Rendon nine, Liz May sixty-five, Budmay sixty-six, Devaney, yes, fifty-seven, no, thirteen, Salter, yes, fifty-four, no, fourteen, Wickrey twenty-three, Conley twenty-five, Lindgren twenty-five, Hendrickson twenty-three, Position E five-fully twenty-four, Position F five-fully twenty-four, Gazinski twenty-four, Brown twenty-five, Amendment D, yes, thirty-three, no, forty-nine, Measure twenty-seven, yes, twenty-eight, no, fifty-four.
Okay, so that was at the bottom, this was second on the top, so I did not mix them up, that's the way of the thing. So did you guys make sure that the WP where it's supposed to be on your, it might have been backwards. Okay.
Making sure you guys.
Is this the last one?
When I counted, it was a single one from the bottom, that's why I was telling wrong, instead of. Yep, that's your last one.
No provisional?
WP.
Seven fifty-six.
You did WS before.
This is WP, yep.
Yes, sir.
That's what you handed me.
I just say fifth kind of.
Should have been the one thing on our hand, but I did not, I was not doing my job.
Total ballots voted four four three.
There's a P.
Human error.
Yes, did you, yeah, cause I missed the actual poll number. This was four four three, what was the actual poll?
There was no poll, there was no number on it, in it.
Oh.
Yeah, no, uh, man, let me do a double check now that you say that. Well, that's WS, which one are we looking for, WP, right?
WP, that's WS.
Well, this is it, this is WP.
No, that's the provisional.
Oh, um.
I handed him what was in there.
Oh, okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, the original poll book.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I gave you that.
Election day, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I gave you that number.
I missed it.
This is WP, right, we're working WP?
Yes, sir.
Seven fifty-six.
Sorry about that number.
Nope, that's why we double check and go with.
Good job.
And this goes in here, cause this is the WS one. Somebody does all mixed up right before we get done, I mean, I can't believe that.
Oh, no, I mean rub, rub.
Four forty-three, you got that?
End that one.
Okay, non-votes, one. Last one, right?
Yes.
State Senator Bangs, three oh two.
Total is counted.
Oh, I'm sorry, one one nine eight.
Thank you, we're good, now go.
Three oh two, bang. Lesnar, thirty-eight. Hold on, I gotta drink out there after I started messing with you. Thune eight thirty-three, Representative Dupre, stop making me laugh, I can't wait, two sixty-eight, Johnson eight fifty-nine, Governor Smith three eighty-nine, Quint twenty-two, Gnome seven seven seven, Cool's three sixty-three, Johnson seven eighty-two, Jackley eight ninety-eight, Marty three thirty-one, Meyer sixty, Sat Gas seven thirty-seven, Cunningham three twenty-five, Hater eight oh nine, Azure three three one, Greenfield seventy, seven eight five, Barnes three one nine, eight one six, Nelson, Fryell two sixty-seven, Johnson seven ninety, did you get Fryell? I didn't, I didn't even pause for you.
Oh, you're good.
Two sixty-seven, seven ninety, Vidal, four oh eight, Massey six six zero, Jensen six oh nine, uh, Devaney, yes, seven seven three, no, one seven zero, Salter, yes, seven seven three, no, one six five, Wickrey four fifty-five, Conley four sixty, Lindgren five oh eight, Hendrickson four fifty-two, Position E five-fully five thirty-five, Position F five-fully five thirty-seven, Gazinski four sixty-eight, Brown four fifty-nine, Amendment D, yes, five eighty-seven, no, five eighty-five, Measure twenty-seven, yes, four eighty-six, no, six nine eight.
Bingo.
Bingo. Bye.
Did you?
I'll make you look.
Alright. Woo. What do we do now?
Gary, you still with us?
I am, was that the last one?
Thank you, Jesus.
That was the last one, sir.
Yep, Gary and Lloyd are still both on.
So I would request a motion from the board to approve, uh, canvas of the general election of twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second. I've got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Uh, Kara, will you call the roll, please?
Roll call, oh. Yeah, he asked for.
Yes. Hadcock?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Roskneck?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried. Is there anything else we need, Cindy?
Prove of payments for election expenses, move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the expenses for the election, is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Laura.
Bearing none, Kara, please call the roll.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Roskneck?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Move adjourned?
Motion carried.
I'm sorry, whoa, hold on.
Let the lawyer lady miss.
Good evening, Laura Rutzel, State's Attorney, because you're gonna be signing a legal document and two of your, uh, commissioners are on Zoom, I think the appropriate thing would be to have them give permission for someone else to sign on their behalf, um, rather than just have the three of you sign, but I'll leave that up to you.
Can they not sign at a later date, they have to sign it today, is that?
We have to send it in on Monday.
Okay.
This is Lloyd, I approve, uh, Cindy is signing my signature for me.
And this is Drews, and I would do the same thing. Ask Cindy Molder to sign mine.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would just like to, I know there's not public here right now, but I really want to thank all of the poll workers. They did an awesome job, and I wanna thank my staff, which I get choked up about, they're awesome. They did a great job. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you all for your hard work.
They are. Cindy, you and your staff deserve to be commended, uh, for the way this came about. Uh, just as a, uh, point, I was in Tripp County, uh, Tripp County, as you know, is the one county that did the hand count, just to give you a little bit of perspective on that, uh, I think they had, uh, a little over twenty-three hundred votes cast, they had thirty-two people that were, uh, doing the counting, and they finished the counting at about five fifteen in the morning.
Wow.
And then, I understand also, they, uh, uh, today at their, uh, canvas, uh, they ran them in the, uh, tabulator, and there was, uh, it sounded like there was one vote difference, I don't know which way, but one vote difference between the hand count and the tabulator.
I hadn't heard that, thank you, Gary, I'm really glad that you heard that next step.
Yep. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
Not, I take a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourned, second.
Got a motion and a second, Kara, please call the roll.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
Roskneck?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye. Motion carried or adjourned? Thank you.
Thank you.